Dr. Giomi?
Here.
Supervisor Bonkowski. Supervisor Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bagwell.
Here.
And Mayor Kroll.
Thank you. We have a quorum. We'll move on to the invocation. Is Brian Underwood here?
There he is.
Please, please. Thank you.
Good morning. It's an honor and privilege to be here to be a part of fighting our hearts and our minds for the words set before us. Good morning, gracious heavenly Father. We thank you for your goodness.
And your grace and your mercy, and for all the blessings you give each of us each and every day, including the opportunity to live, work, and enjoy this special corner of the world you've created here in Carson City. Lord, I thank you for these servants of yours who give so tirelessly of themselves to provide a safe and thriving community for us to serve you. Please bless them today with discernment as they ponder the matters of your people, and ultimately grant them your wisdom to make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. Father, in this Advent season amid the press of the day and the work you call us to do, please grant us margins of opportunity to reflect on our blessings this season, and the gift of your Son who came in humility to set us free to be people of yours. Please give us hearts to think of others more than ourselves, and above all, help us to have the desire to love one another. Father, we don't know what the future holds, but we know that you hold it, and with this I ask that you go before us to show us the way, and encourage us from behind in times of doubt, and walk beside so that we reflect you in all that we do. We ask all these things in your holy and precious name. Amen.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Adam, would you do us the honor of leading us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Adam was from the leadership class. We wanted to just get you involved. We're at public comment. If there's anyone that has any general public comment that they'd like to make, please come up and state your name for the record. You coming, too?
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Leader and Supervisors. It's already on. How cool. Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. I come this morning with so much on my mind. There's so much in the news. Shouldn't listen to NPR before I come. The deal is that I first want to start with a quote, and hopefully I'll get through it fairly well. It's by Thomas Jefferson, the author of the Declaration of Independence. I'm just not suggesting nobody knows, but just to say that this is the Thomas Jefferson I'm quoting. "The question whether one generation of man has a right to bind another seems never to have been started. I believe no generation can contract debts greater than may be paid during the course of its own existence. The conclusion, then, is that neither the representatives of the nation nor the whole nation itself assembled can validly engage debt beyond that they can pay in their own time." I'm using this quote as a start. I'm trying to learn about framing your statement so that it comes out to really relate to what you're trying to say. Emotion often overtakes me, and it's hard for me to stay focused. But the deal is that we're looking at a time when we're facing wonderful opportunity with the master plan. And unless, in my opinion, we use that opportunity to really create housing for people that are already here, we're really shooting ourselves in the foot. We're expected now to pay for roads forever, which is a word I can never say. You know, it relates to the meaning that we're responsible till we're not around, basically. And I would like to suggest that every resident here, from the bees that live in the ground to the ones that fly and make hives, to the nature and the wildlife here, they are occupants as well of this community. And I don't see in this master plan as much consideration for them as they should, and I don't see there's as much consideration with the building to accommodate people that are doing the laundry for people, the people that are caring for our elderly, the people that are working to maintain the facilities that we use every day, the people that are at our stores that are working for minimum wages and have limited income. I have a limited income. You have a limited income. What we choose to use it for is really our discretion, but as leaders of this community and people that are dealing with all the departments and all that keep us running, you understand that more than many people, how important it is to use what you have carefully and thoughtfully. And I would like to suggest that perhaps we are giving way to contractors and speculators and developers a lot more than we should. I think we should require them to consider our needs as a community. If they can't build houses that are going to work for us, let them put them out further away so that the people that are working here will not have to commute. But that I think the balance can be found, and that they can make money as it's supposed to be. I'm not suggesting otherwise, and that they can have their place in helping us develop houses that are environmentally friendly and use materials like the new asphalt that they're considering that would utilize plastics and all the different opportunities to create cements that are less fracturable and more durable and long-lasting. So the materials that we require use should be upgraded. I think that the space that's left for nature should be considered more. I think that the prices should be considered to relate to the actual community as it stands, from those that are on the streets to those that are wealthy enough to move from California to live here. Have a good place for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Okay, then we're going to move on to item six. Is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we're going to pull 14E. There's some corrections that need to be made, and so we'll bring that back to the next meeting.
Okay. Is there any other corrections that anyone?
So if there's no objection, then we'll adopt the agenda as published with the exception of item 14E, which will be moved to a further future agenda item. We're now on to the consent agenda. We will be pulling 9A from the consent for discussion. Is there anyone, any other item you'd like pulled? Is there anyone in the audience that would like an item from the consent agenda pulled? Okay, then I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 9A.
Move to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 7A and 8A.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with items 7A and 8A. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. We'll now take up item 9A, which is a contract for conflict counsel. Ms. Akers?
Good morning. Kara Lakers Purchasing and Contracts. So this is to kind of shift the contract over to a new conflict counsel. And so this will be for 1718-006B in the amount of $62,929.62 to get them through the June 30th, 2020 contract period.
Did we have a late material correction that you'd like to put on the record?
Sure. So we are going to cross out on the exhibit, the work, scope of work. We did redline out years one and two because it's a three-year contract, so.
And this is just year three?
Right. It's the last six months of the year three. Yes.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? Any public comment on this item? See, none? I'll accept a motion?
I got it. I move to approve the contract with the corrections noted in the late material and presented on the record.
I have a motion in a second to approve the contract pursuant to the late material that was presented today. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We're now on agenda item number 11A, which is a presentation and legislative update by the Porter Group. Good morning.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Nancy, Stephanie. My name's Bob Herbert, and I have Ashley with me. We're very appreciative of the time this morning to kind of give you an update, if that's possible, and what's going on in Washington, DC.
Nothing.
I'll give a little bit of background on myself, and then I'll let Ashley talk to her background. My career basically was two paths. I was a, I joined the military. I did 42 years of military service. I retired as a two-star general. And during that period, I worked the last, culminating the last five years mostly in the Pentagon and working up there with the four-star general who oversaw the National Guard for the entire nation. And some of you may know, before I left the state to go work in Washington, DC, I was the commander of the base out of the Nevada Army National Guard. At the same time, I was a civil servant and then eventually moved on to Senator Reed's staff. I worked for Senator Harry Reed for 20 years and did all of his appropriations as a senior policy advisor. So I know some of you know some of this stuff, but I just wanted to give you a little background. But my point in all this is that I've been playing in Washington for quite a while now and exploiting those ideas and talents and people that I've worked with for many, many years to help Carson City and trying to find ways to get things done for all of you. So I just wanted to give you a little bit of background, and I'll turn it over to Ash.
Good morning, Mayor Pro Tem Bagwell and Carson City Supervisors. Thank you for having us here this morning. I know many of you. I'm from northern Nevada. I had the pleasure of coming on to the Porter Group in April and was down at session for most of that time lobbying for some of our state clients. I'm very happy to be back doing federal things, I think. So I sort of refocused my issue areas in June, right after session, and helping Bob with a lot of our clients here in northern Nevada. I do live in Reno, so I get down to Carson quite a bit. Prior to that, I was, I worked for the other senator, Senator Dean Heller, as his state director for six years, and then was on the House side, working for him in the district office and the state office. And prior to that, I was in DC for about 10 years, working at the Department of the Interior, so I have a background in resources and public lands issues, and then was working for Governor Gwynn for many years. So that is, that's sort of my background, and I'm happy to be here today, and thank you again.
Okay, so just the first slide here, just to give you a little background. Obviously, I'm senior vice president of the Porter Group, and of course, John Porter, Congressman Porter, is in charge of this lovely operation that we have. And that's just a little bit of background about John, since he's not here. And then this is our group. I would like to stress that how we operate over many other firms in Washington, DC as we work as a team and a group. We don't, like a lot of lobby firms, they just hire one individual that is responsible for that contract. That's not how we operate. We use everybody at all times because everybody's got a, is just smarter on something than the others, and we think that combining all of that makes us a better operation, and again, helps Carson City in a better way. So again, we're bipartisan, you know, we're bicameral with John's experience, obviously, in the House and ours in the Senate, that we're able to work both sides of the hill for you guys. And we're, you know, obviously bipartisan, given that John's a Republican and I'm a Democrat. Anyway, our goal is, of course, to find solutions for you guys, to try and help and do what we can. We want to be an extension to you. We're your staff, and basically, we're your staff in Washington, DC, and we're carrying your mission and trying to accomplish everything that you're trying to do for this great city. So what's going on in DC, before I even get into appropriations, obviously, it's all about impeachment all the time. And it's pretty much taking the air out of the whole room. There's a lot of bitterness going on. Probably, it's probably the worst environment that I've ever seen in my 20 years of working on Capitol Hill. And so the acrimony is just, nobody really wants to get anything done. They're all focused on the impeachment. And so, you know, if you thought there was a divide between the two parties before, this has done nothing but, you know, add to it. So, and then that's the reason why appropriations are, they're just not getting anywhere. They're too focused on the impeachment process right now. But I will tell you that the chairman of, the chairman of both the appropriation committees are meeting tomorrow and trying to make a final decision on whether they're going to be able to pass an omnibus. Because they were talking about minibus's before, but there is no time to do minibus's till December 20th. So they're looking at trying to get it done as one huge omnibus, which is another challenge because, if you may recall, last year, the President did sign the omnibus, but swore he wouldn't do it again. So I don't know where that's going to go. So we're either looking, I mean, we'll know by tomorrow whether it's going to be another CR or whether they're going to be able to put together an omnibus and get everything done. And I said, that's important to you guys because you have, you know, we have stuff that we've been working with Nancy on that are in some of those bills, and we're, you know, we're anxious to get them passed so that you can get the funding here at Carson City. So I wish I knew. I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm thinking more and more it's a CR, and if it's a CR, I don't know if it might even be for the whole year, which will really be detrimental because the bills that we worked all so hard on to get stuff in for Carson City will never come to fruition, so we'll have to start over next year. Any other thoughts on your side?
Yeah, I'll just say, from a city perspective, too, you're probably interested in things like the National Flood Insurance Program and Temporary Assistance for Needy Families, some of those other grants that are funded at 19 levels through this current continuing resolution. So they'll probably, if we do end up with another CR through the year, those will probably be funded at the 19 levels. So just wanted to make note of that.
So we worked with Nancy early, you know, last January, and we started talking about the city's priorities, which are listed here, and going through those, and that was a guide to help us look at ways to help the city. We, of course, we've talked about this, about doing this again, and, you know, January, updating it with you, and obviously, we're going to have the board of supervisors involved in making sure that we get, you know, the proper priorities in order, in priority, so we can work those into next year's cycle of appropriation bills. These are some of the requests that we submitted for you in the current bills, which I'm hoping will get passed. The other thing that, you know, we're always watching for are windows of opportunity with other legislation. In this case, the Water Resources Development Act suddenly came up. We reached out to the city. Nancy and her team put some stuff together for us very quickly. It was a short notice deal. We got it all in, and we got it submitted to this, to our delegation, and they're trying to work on getting it implemented into that bill. But again, this all goes to the bigger problem of the impeachment and how much legislation, what's going to get it done. This bill may be put together, but it never may see the light of day, at least not till next year. So, you know, anyway, so we're looking at bills like that. The other one that's been talked about that potentially could come up is a reauthorization of the highway bill, which is another opportunity for us to see some projects and see what we can do to weave highway projects into that bill for you guys, for the city. We're always looking for grant opportunities, just in, you know, we always, we have staff back there that are combing through the federal register, looking for opportunities, and anytime we find something, we, of course, reach out to Nancy and her team right away and start figuring out what we can do and how we can get Carson City to jump into that. And again, on these grant opportunities, the best, what I learned from Senator Reed's office is that the best way we can do this is get the packet, get it submitted, and then what we do, we'll go around the Hill and we'll get the delegation to sign on and do a support letter, which helps substantially when the, when these grant opportunities are being evaluated. And in cases that we want to make sure that it's successful, too, is you can ask for technical assistance. And so what will happen there, we can set up a phone call with Nancy and her team, or they can come to Washington, DC and sit down with the folks that are actually doing it to make sure that the grant application is properly put together, crossed all the Ts, dotted all the Is and everything, because we don't want to lose a grant opportunity just because something wasn't right in how it was filled out. And the other thing is, if we are unsuccessful, I've learned is to go back and ask for a debrief on why you were unsuccessful, and in those cases, you learn from your mistakes, of course, and hopefully in the next round, when we go back after the grant, we'll be more successful. So we're using all those types of things to make, you know, to make us more successful for the city.
So I'll just take over really quickly here and talk about the lands bill update. As you are probably aware, back in the early 2000s, or maybe it was later 2000s, there was the public lands omnibus bill that was signed into law that Carson City had a portion of. And, you know, moving forward, there are obviously technical changes that needed to be made to that. And so we have been working with the city, with Nancy and with both, and Stephanie, who's been, both have been great to work with, on just updating some of that technical language. And so we have a pretty good bill proposal right now that Congressman Amadee is taking the lead on, also working with our counterparts on the Senate side. In fact, one of our folks in DC is going to be updating Senator Rosen and Senator Cortez Masto's staff next week on this bill. So I'm just working out some final technical language with Stephanie, and that will be packaged up and sent to the Ledge Council there so that they can fix that, present a nice, clean bill. And Congressman Amadee is really hoping to introduce this along with some other northern Nevada regional bills as early as January. He would like to get this done. There is opportunity in the next year for vehicle to help pull all those bills together and get them hopefully passed by next year. Can't make any promises. We're hoping that that's going to be the case, but with impeachment and an election around the corner, you know, unfortunately, I think a lot of things take a backseat. So, you know, I think Congressman Amadee is looking, again, with the delegation on a vehicle for some of these bigger lands bills, which include Carson. So your team has been fantastic to work with, and we've got everything packaged and really ready to go now. So that's sort of where we are with the lands bill update. There's also a right-of-way issue, as I'm sure you're all aware, that Mayor Kroll has been working with the Forest Service and the rest of your team on, and I think we're making some progress there. But we also included that into the bill, just in case something doesn't happen administratively. So I think, I think we're there, and we're working well together with the delegation to make sure that this happens for the city.
This is just a slide highlighting, you know, some of the stuff that we do. We work very closely with our delegation, and many of our delegation, and some of you have been to our office, which is just literally across the street from the House Office's buildings, and they come over and use our office all the time. You know, obviously, they can't make fundraising calls on federal grounds, so they have to come over. But that has afforded us an opportunity to interact with them more than the normal because we see them all the time. Not only do we see them when we go to the Hill, you know, when Nancy and her team and the mayor come up to the Hill, and we go around and do our meetings, but we see them on a regular basis, just coming over to our house, not only for fundraising purposes, but also for different events that we have, like the Nevada Society and stuff like that that we hold there. And that really does conclude. I would just like to say that we are an extension of your staff, and we are always available at any time to call us anytime. We're very appreciative to be a part of your team and to work for Carson City, and look forward to continuing to do so for a long time to go.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have just a comment, and it doesn't involve you directly, but indirectly. And that is that there's a lot of kind of chatter in the background right now about Governor Cicilac and the fact that he's not making himself available or his chief staff available to, for northern Nevadans on northern Nevada issues, and everything seems to be Las Vegas-focused. And the ongoing decades-old issue of moving the Capitol is coming up again, but now we have Democratic governor and Democratic both sides of the legislature, which could provide a route for that to maybe happen. And so I would just ask that if you hear anything pertaining to that, that you bring it to our attention. I know it's a difficult process for that to actually happen, but it would be devastating to Carson City if the Capitol was moved. And so I think that we need to be on top of that issue and make sure that we're being proactive in trying to make it as difficult as possible.
Well, we do interact with the governor's office quite a bit, and obviously, we'll keep our ears to the ground, and if we hear anything, we'll let you know immediately. But I have not, to date, heard anything about that.
Mr. Barrett?
Thank you. I'll echo what Supervisor Bonkowski said. It's one of my greatest concerns, having lived in the East, the Midwest, and here. I have seen there is a propensity for this to be done, usually in the 19th century, but it will come to haunt us in the 21st if it happens. As a matter of fact, I spent 34 years in Nebraska, where Lincoln stole the state capital from Omaha as early as it could in the process. And I think we all know the Battle Mountain, Austin story here in Nevada. Also, I'd ask that you either supply your cards for us or give all your contact information to Nancy, and she can pass it on to us. As the nonpartisan on this nonpartisan board, I'm curious as to, you've talked about how impeachment is sucking all the air out of the room, and it's a very partisan situation. I have this strange view that perhaps this whole situation will give us more nonpartisans in this country, and then maybe it will. What is, what is your view of, the view of the people in Congress on that? I'm sure they're not happy with that thought.
No, I, it's actually the opposite. Like I said, it's just a bigger split. It's the, you know, the parting ocean is even wider now. And I don't, you know, I, I actually kind of wish they could learn from John Porter or myself, and I don't know if you all realize this, but, you know, John and I have been friends for probably 25 years now. But I was part of the Reed machine that helped take him out of office. And, you know, he always tells me, actually, that was the best thing that ever happened to him. But isn't it, this is, of course, Nevada, this is Nevada, right? It's always ironic in politics, but here we are, partners now and a team and working together and doing our best to find the middle of the road, as you're describing. I just wish, that would be, that would happen. just wish, yeah, it would be, that would happen more often.
Thank you. I think that does it for me, although I'm sure that my colleagues would like to get into more specifics with you, but maybe we'll do this after.
Be happy to do that.
Thank you. Potentially it would, it would be great if you could help us in looking at waivers for some of the HUD rules and maybe we need to look at some regulatory stuff that we can do within the current parameters that would be helpful to us. Kind of what, uh, Mr. Lyons was talking about this morning, our sober living homes and some of the HUD regulations that don't allow a voucher to be used because of the number of bathrooms, the number of sinks. And I believe there's some waivers and working with Senator Masto and our Housing Task Force. Maybe we need to kind of go a administrative direction for a little while and see if we can't get, um, something good for our community that way. So I just kind of throw that out as a, something for you to maybe address or look at.
Yeah, I, I absolutely. I just, I think we put that on our priority list for starting first thing in next session and we'll start figuring out ways that we can do that, um, in January. And like you said, maybe it's just a matter of working with our delegation to put together a letter requesting a waiver and, and it, like you said, administratively sometimes a lot easier than changing legislation.
Just a thought. Did you have something else, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, I'm sorry, but I, I process things, process things slowly, although I'm brilliant, of course. I, I, Lori's question, uh, brings to mind the fact that we haven't had any gas tax money out of the feds or the state for many years. And we have a real problem with our roads here. And, uh, if there's any way to find any money that can help our road situation or prod Congress to realize our infrastructure is going down the tubes nationwide, but also here. Both Brad and Lori sit on our, our RTC, our, our Transportation, Committee, and, and they know this is more than even I do. So if you can point us in the right direction and in, in Washington on that, any help you can give us would be helpful.
Right. And so basically I look at three major ways to do that. Obviously the annual transportation appropriations bills, and then also the highway bill that I described earlier. And then the other grant opportunities. And then we just, our staff just found another one called routes, which I think is going to be something that we can be helpful. So, you know, we'll continue to do that. Um, I'll get on my soapbox for a second. And that is that we need earmarks back. Um, you know, I, I did all the appropriation bills for Senator Reed and, you know, at the peak, when he was leader, we were bringing roughly $350 million worth of earmarks per year in these different appropriation bills. I mean, I, I, just like you know how bad the roads are here, how, you know, the 1% that's being spent today, that used to be earmarks is still being spent. It's just being spent by bureaucrats in Washington DC. And so I always say, how can some cone head sitting in an office, corner office in Washington DC know better than you do on what these roads are and what you need and what you need to, you know, where you need the funding to do that. So I, I, again, everybody, I'm not sure if the people really realize it and the press hasn't talked about it, but the money, the 1% discretionary funding never went away. It's just being dictated by bureaucrats as opposed to members that come to the state on a reoccurring basis, that meet with you and hear these kinds of, have these kinds of conversations and are better able to focus and, and put that funding where it needs to be. But it's a long way around your answer.
Mayor Potem, can I just say one thing, just to address your HUD question or your HUD comment? Um, I, I agree wholeheartedly. I know that there are a lot of cities and local communities, particularly in Nevada, that are having the same issue with, uh, the, with the department. And so I will, um, we will work with the two senators and with Congressman Amade on some of those issues. I do want to point out though, that in the Senate Transportation and Urban Development Housing Bill, Appropriations Bill that passed the Senate and the House, there's level funding in there for the, um, CDBG program. And there's also 25 million set aside. So this one is going to conference, so that's good news, hopefully. Um, so there's, there's money that's been set aside. I think it's 25 million for a pilot program for states, uh, for, for housing. And I think it's substance abuse, um, residential housing or something for substance abuse. I'll get, I'll get the numbers, but that's, that's good news. We're moving in the right direction. Um, I found that HUD out of all the agencies is very difficult to deal with. Um, so it's good that we have our delegation there. Um, so I'll look into the waiver issue as well.
So the biggest thing on those appropriation bills one last time is that, um, the first thing was the budgets were different between the House and the Senate, and that was the huge argument. And they finally figured that out. Now it's just the wall, basically. And so there has been discussion that they, if they do package some kind of omnibus, it may be all the bills and hopefully like Ashley was saying, transportation will be one of them because it's not controversial. But DHS might be the one that suffers and, and doesn't get passed because of the wall issue.
Mr. Giomi?
I, I just have a couple of questions and one was to take off of what John said. Have you heard sort of any discussions about, um, relative to legislation in terms of, of equal taxing for use of roads? I mean, with the increase, obviously in electric vehicles and, and that's only going to, that's only going to go up in alternative fuel vehicles that are not paying that fuel tax, but are still impacting utilizing the roads. And now you're even starting to see electric, I mean, this electric bus that goes between Reno and Carson, which is great environmentally. Um, I think we all love that, but there, there's no gas tax. Um, and so that's the first question. Have you sort of heard, because I really feel like it's a nationwide problem. It isn't, it isn't a problem unique to Nevada. Um, it's a nationwide problem. So I've just, you know, I, I think I know the answer to this. You're probably not hearing any discussion because, because of everything else that's going on.
Well, and, and really, quite frankly, nobody in Washington DC right now has internal fortitude to address tax, increasing gas taxes. It's a shame. So they've been working very hard to, to find other avenues for revenue for highways. But you're right, the electric cars, I mean, they're using the same highways, but they're not paying anything.
Right.
Um, so yeah, there's a big challenge there. I mean, they were talking about miles, but of course that's a privacy issue. And so there's huge, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, but that is the highway bill and that's what will be worked through as they start going through that. And I will keep in mind what you're talking about to see what we can do to help influence that.
Okay. And my other question is how, um, and, and I don't want you to throw any of our congressional delegates under the bus because I understand you have working relationships with all of them, but just, um, I'm sort of interested in, um, how you feel they work together to look out for the interests of Nevada as a whole. Um, I mean, do you find them generally, uh, and I'm particularly, not just working with you, but working with each other. Um, and I understand there's politics involved and there's different parties involved. But, you know, Nevada's always been one of those states where, um, we like to think, we think independently. I mean, that, that's, that's always been my belief and, and, um, I'd really like to see our representatives in Congress and the Senate, you know, sort of be that way. So I, you know, I'm hoping that that's how they are. And I, I'm hoping they're not super parochial, but I'd just like your slant on that.
No, I, they're not at all. I think they're, I, I think they're all working very well together. And, um, they have, I'm trying to remember how often, frequently, but they, I think it's like quarterly or maybe even monthly, they get together, the entire delegation gets sits down and gets together and talks about what's going on in Nevada and what they all can be doing. But I, I think they are working very well together. Um, and, you know, the, and they need to because they have to team up. Um, I, I, again, I'm a little parochial, but, you know, we lost Senator Reed. I mean, he was a leader of the Senate and we got a lot of stuff done because of that. And, and everything in, in DC is based, everything is based on seniority. And so we have, you know, significantly junior, you know, delegation right now. So they have to work efficiently as a team to do that because they can't just bank on Senator Reed to help carry the water.
And, and finally, um, what other local governments do you, is the Porter Group represent Nevada?
What other?
Local governments?
Um, well, we, we have Washoe County, um, and then we have the city of Fallon. Anybody else?
Um, down south, city of North Las Vegas.
Yeah, we have North Las Vegas, down south, and Henderson.
Okay. Thank you.
First, uh, thank you for the not ready for primetime players reference. It's been a long time since I thought about the Cone Heads. Going back to roads, um, I think that we have two, possibly three issues, uh, that require separate funding sources. So there's roads, just general maintenance and capital for roads. And then of course, you know, with your help, we received the, the Tiger Grant for the South Carson Project, and we have two more corridor projects coming up, North Carson and then, uh, Williams Street. So opportunities there for additional Tiger Grants or other grants. Uh, and then what Stacy mentioned, which is there's a whole class of vehicles out there impacting our roads that are paying nothing. Um, so, you know, it's, it's not just that. That's an opportunity, but it's really all three. I think our best success will be on the grants for the special projects. I think, I, I agree with you. I don't, I don't know that anybody in Congress is really interested in doing their jobs and fixing problems. You know, they seem to be more intent on just fighting for power at this point. But, um, you know, it's, at least we have, hopefully we'll be successful, at least with the grants for our projects. And maybe they'll wake up someday and decide to actually do their jobs.
Yeah, one more thing. And this is getting in the weeds and looking way down the road, but I'm aware that there was, uh, lobbying going on, trying to, um, change the tax code to, to get to, um, the idea of in some form untapping the revenue that comes from municipal bonds, which are not taxed. Is that still alive and do we have to be concerned? Because that's the lifeblood of local government.
At this time, again, you know, I know that there's been some talk in Washington DC about a tax bill, but, um, at the, at this point, I, I'm highly, I highly doubt that anything will happen on, on that bill. And if it, if it does, it will be scaled back significantly and we'll just keep our eyes open to make sure that that doesn't occur.
Thank you so very much. Is there any public comment? Okay. Thank you. Oh, go ahead. Mr. Lyons?
[inaudible]
Oh, French. Danny French. Yes, sorry.
Mr. French, Carson City, Nevada, um, Chair and, and Supervisors. Um, I have a comment and, and I'd like to direct it. I'm not, gee, y'all, oh, I'm not familiar with Cone Heads and I'm not real comfortable with bureaucrats and I'm not sure. I like to have it opposing forces. Unless we're able to all work together, we've got a problem. And so, um, while I didn't take offense personally, because I don't think I fit into the Cone Head, I could be called something else. Um, but your reference to music, perhaps I should look up. And as far as bureaucrats, um, I tend to think they're people that are struggling like everybody else to hold their head above water, whether it's because of the popularity they might have garnished or the power or the authority that they don't want to lose. But that all of us have a share in this and I, and so I'm a little bit opposed to, um, fragmenting us out such. Um, we're all in this together. But I also, um, wanted to bring in the fact that we get billed by DMV for registration based on the size of our vehicle, the type of vehicle and the use. I don't see why we couldn't have a bill put to Washington to suggest that every vehicle, be it electric or diesel or gasoline or another proponent, be based on its weight, its style, its type, or come up with some sort of consideration there that no matter you drove it or you didn't, if it sat in your garage, you would still pay a, a yearly fee or however, that would contribute to our, our road situation and such, um, to make it an equalized thing, not by the use of our gas necessarily because it's really tough. So, um, thank you. I, I appreciate this opportunity again.
Thanks, Mr. French. Thank you. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none. Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate your presentation. There's no action on this item. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to move on to item, uh, 12A, uh, which is the discussion only, the presentation on our, uh, financial highlights from our CAFER. Uh, Ms. Russell, are you gonna take us through this? Thank you.
Good morning. I have with me here today Ralph Piercy, who's a founding principal, and Chris Farthing, who's Audit Principal of our external, um, audit team, Piercy, Bowler, Taylor and Kern. Um, they will be presenting next. Um, they can come up whenever they'd like. First and foremost, I want to, um, thank the entire finance department. Um, this has been a really tough year. We're all learning new positions and, um, in addition to that, we have an ERP that we're implementing. So, um, I can't thank them enough. Anna Jimenez and Jamie Stevenson, they're accounting managers. They are the backbone of the entire accounting department. They make sure everybody gets their check. They make sure, well, um, vendors get their checks too. So everybody gets their checks. Um, they manage fixed assets. They, they, um, review the cash receipts. I mean, all the day-to-day activities of the entire city. Um, so we couldn't do anything in the city without them. Pam Ganger is the Deputy CFO and me, we work together, putting most of the document in front of you, um, together. We deal with all the rest of the issues in the office and the city as well as, um, as the big documents, such as the budget and the CAFER. So, uh, we're just a good, small, mighty team that, that does a good job. So I can't thank them enough. There's no way we could do this without them. Um, so having said that, let's get into the meat of this. Um, the first thing I like to report is that we did receive an unqualified opinion. Um, this is the highest level of assurance that is offered by the external auditors. So, um, that means we did really good. Um, on page six of the, uh, CAFER, which was available, uh, online, is our Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year 18. That is the 29th straight year we've received that. Um, I personally have only worked at the city for eight, so I've hopefully contributed to that record. Uh, my goal is to get to 30, and I do believe this, um, 2019 CAFER will get us there. On page 12 is the Management Discussion and Analysis. Um, this is a concise summary of this large 200 and whatever page document. This is what you want to read if you don't have time to read the whole document. Page 22 is the Government-Wide Statement of Net Position, and the notes to those, um, financial statements support, um, the Government-Wide Statements. It starts on page 37. So the Government-Wide is the full accrual. It's everything we own and everything we owe as a city. Everything behind it is a supporting documentation and it all rolls up into that Government-Wide. On page 44, um, of the notes to the financial statements, we did have two budget violations this year. Uh, the grant fund expenses in the juvenile function exceeded the budget by $2,613. Um, this is actually excluded in NRS 354. Um, so we could have fixed this. I found it relatively late in our, in our compilation of this CAFER. So for full transparency, we went ahead and just disclosed it as a budget violation. Uh, the insurance fund was our other budget violation. That was a significant one, $586,069. This was due to an unanticipated liability accrual, um, for a large legal case that we settled recently. Um, at year end, actually in May, we start working on the second round of budget augmentations. And during that process, we pull a report from our third-party administrator, CCMSI, and we look at what the liability has done over the last 11 months compared to what we had last year, and if there's an adjustment to that. This year we pulled that report. It didn't look like a significant adjustment, so we didn't do an augmentation to this. Well, between May, when we pulled that report and June 30th, the, uh, CCMSI had determined that this large case had a $1.2 million liability. So they, um, they put that on our report and we had to include it. Um, I think in the future, instead of just pulling that report, I'm going to also get in touch with the DA's office and talk to them about what could be settling in the next couple of months and try to get a full picture. So this doesn't happen in the future. Are there any questions about those? Okay.
Just for the public, so that you recognize, she's talking about the CAFER that's attached to item 12B, the big book, and she's doing the highlights of it on this agenda item, just in case anyone's trying to track. just in case anyone's trying to track. You have to kind of use both Agenda Items 12A and 12B.
That's correct. So on Page 204, the Schedule of Findings and Question Costs, I'm going to let Chris and Ralph talk about that during their presentation, so I'm going to move on and talk about the highlights of how the city did last year. So first, I'm going to focus on governmental activities as a whole. Assets went up by 18.2 million. This was $7 million in state funding for South Carson Street, and then we also had about $7.8 million in new capital assets, land, work in progress, that kind of thing. Our liabilities went down by 5.7 million, that is principal paydown, basically, on debt. Our equity increased by 23.9 million, so we had a very good year. On the Statement of Activities, revenues increased by 15 million. This, again, was that 7 million funding for South Carson Street. There was 1.9 million we received from the ambulance to repay subsidies that we had previously extended to the ambulance fund. And then our taxes increased by about 4.3 million, were the large changes there. Expenses had a rather large decrease of 11.2 million, and this is primarily due to the OPEB and PERS adjustments. There wasn't any huge change in salaries or benefits, it was just the liability adjustments from last year to this year. We had very large increases last year, we had slight decreases this year, so the total of the two was the biggest change there. So our total change in net position was an increase of 26.2 million. This is a slide we show revenues by source. It doesn't change very much from year to year. Consolidated taxes and property taxes are our two major sources of revenue. 26.7% in consolidated taxes, property taxes are 25.4%, and we have other taxes that 17.2% increase, or of the whole pie, excuse me, that consists of sales taxes, franchise fees, and motor vehicle fuel taxes, excuse me. Like I said, very similar to prior year. This is our expenses for governmental activities, again, very familiar, or very similar to prior year. Public safety always comes in first place at 23.6 million, or 20, I'm sorry, 36.9 million. And then the general government is always second, it's 16.7 million this year. Those are both slightly down from last year. And third place this year is usually a struggle between Public Works and Culture &amp; Rec, and this year, Culture &amp; Rec beat them out by a little bit. I'm sorry, this chart just reminds me of a horse race, so. I always feel the need to say who is coming in first and second. So we're going to move to the General Fund, specifically, this is our operating fund, the only fund that has unrestricted revenues in it. So, from 2015 to 2019, you can see the blue, the revenues column, continues to get a little higher than the expense column, so we're continuing to increase that gap. Back in 2015, that gap was only 4.8 million, which, most of that would be debt service, and then a little bit would be capital. But in 19, it was $11.7 million difference. So when we have those differences, we use those to build fund balance, to try to create that rainy day fund. We fund debt service, as I said, and then we fund deferred maintenance and capital throughout the city as well. This is a look at our fund balance, this is what everybody always wants to know. So in beginning fund balance in 2020, we budgeted about $10 million. What we actually ended with for 19 was $14.6 million. So that's an additional $4.6 million the city has in their fund balance. However, there are restricted funds in there that need to roll forward, that are restricted by NRS, or some kind of grant, a donor, that we have to use for specific purposes, so that will roll forward. And then we have an agreement with the landfill, and about $600,000 needs to be moved to capital for landfill equipment. So at the end of the day, we have about $2.5 million that we can extra, that we weren't anticipating. And just to explain that chart a little bit, at the very bottom, there's a very thin blue line, and that's inventory and prepaid, so it's non-spendable, the money's already spent. The restricted is the red column, that's again restricted for NRS, donations, whatever. And then assigned is things that are already in the budget for 2020, so that assigned balance is already anticipated to be spent next year. There are a little bit of assigned funds that this board has decided to spend on certain things as well that's in there, but the vast majority of it is items already included in next year's budget. And then the purple is the unassigned. So I've got a couple slides on the business types activities. This is our enterprise funds. So the assets increased by 20.4 million. This is primarily the completion of the sewer plant and the $10 million we received for the water refunding, sorry. And then liabilities increased 12.2%. This is, again, that water crossover refunding, we had an increase of 10.2 million for that that will end up paying off in 2020, and that will go away. And we also had a new $7 million bond, and then we had some principal paydowns. So net position in total increased by 8.2%, excuse me, 8.2 million. And then on the Statement of Activities, we have revenues increasing by 2.6%. This is actually 1.4 million in extra connection fees for the water and the sewer fund, and then we had an increase of about $800,000 in the building permits this last year. Expenses increased by 1.8 million, and that's primarily the ambulance that we paid to the General Fund from the subsidies that we've paid them over the last several years. So we only had about an $800,000 increase in the change in net position. That's about all I had. If you don't have any questions for me, I'll turn it over to the Piercy-Bowler team, and they can talk to you about their findings and present audit.
And you're going to work the slides, right? I'm Ralph Piercy, I'm one of the founding, founders of Piercy, Bowler, Taylor &amp; Kern, and with me today is Chris Farthing, and we're both Audit Principals in the firm. But I want to start off by just saying, thank you for allowing us to be of service. We consider Carson City a very important client to the firm, and we strive every day to earn your confidence in us. We have a service philosophy that's a little different than some firms. Our service philosophy is we try to put more talent on the job, or more experience on the job, instead of seeing a partner the first couple of days of the job, and maybe the last couple of days of the job. Sherry can attest that either Chris or I were onsite virtually every day of the job. And we think, you know, you pay us for what we know, and a lot of the experience comes with our upper-level people, and we try to put that talent on the job. I'd like to echo Sherry's comment about the, was it Tiny Mighty Force? I'd like to add, Tiny Mighty Force for Good, they're a very talented financial group, they get a lot done with a small staff, and this year, they got, you know, they were involved not only in doing what they normally do for us, which is just totally cooperate at every level, in terms of us getting our job done, there's never any contentious matters, but they were also involved in the major system implementation. They corrected, you know, findings that we had last year, and we appreciate them a lot. They are a very good staff, though a smaller number. Before I turn most of the rest of the time over to Chris to talk about what an audit is, I'll maybe introduce what an audit is, and then how our audit procedures applied specifically to the city of Carson City. I'd just like to say, an audit, basically, a financial statement audit is basically an information gathering process, and we design procedures to gather sufficient information to be able to say that the financial statements are fairly stated, or that we believe are fairly stated in all material respects. Those procedures, we are really based upon our judgment, and somebody else's judgment might be a little different in the same circumstances, but we exercise our judgment about what the users of the financial statements would think are material, and we exercise our judgment in designing those procedures as to where we think the greatest risk of material misstatement might be. And so we design these procedures to hopefully find material misstatements that are yet unrecorded, and to address those material or significant areas that a user of the financial statement might think are material. With that, Chris, you want to go into a little more detail on that, and how it applied to Carson City?
Yeah, thanks, and good morning, Board of Supervisors. So Ralph mentioned that our audit is to find reasonable assurance, and that's because we do not test 100% of the records. We perform sampling procedures and test analytically. So what does "in all material respects" mean? One of the Principals in our office likes to use what's a farmer's analogy. Basically, our concern is finding that all of the haystacks are there in the field, that they are complete, and that they've been valued appropriately. We don't necessarily look for every needle at the bottom of each haystack. I think I had my slides there. So our audit approach is based on a risk-based approach, which it has been for the entire history of the firm, which was decades ahead of when other, when the actual audit literature required it to be a risk-based audit approach. Our approach was actually authored, co-authored by one of our Principals in our firm, and it's actually marketed internationally and across the US to a lot of other smaller firms. A risk-based approach involves dissecting the financial statements and identifying the key assertions. So we're looking for the key account balances, groups of transactions, and related assertions, and then identifying which assertions are significant to those account balances and classes of transactions. So for instance, for the existence of receivables, we're focused on whether all those receivables are actually valid and collectible by the city. After identifying the material risks and assertions, we design further procedures to gather sufficient evidence to support our opinion, and schedule the engagement in a manner that is most effective and efficient. Given that this is our second year on the audit engagement, we tailored our procedures largely based on what we learned last year, to focus in on the areas that we consider to be the most significant risk to the city. While we're still working around some end-of-life software limitations, management has made a number of improvements around prior-year deficiencies that Ralph mentioned earlier that improved our efficiency in the current year. And then next year, we'll be focusing on the implementation of the new software that began on July 1st of 2019. On the next slides, I'm going to go through a few of our procedure, our key procedures on key account balances and assertions during the audit. So the first area I want to touch on is cash and restricted cash and investments, cash of approximately $80 million, and restricted cash of approximately $12 million. In this, we agree 100% of the cash and investment balances to custodian records, and then we test the fair value adjustments for key investments. We also perform price testing of investments, where we actually go out and look at third-party sources to validate that the price recorded by the custodian is actually accurate, and we had no unacceptable findings in this area. The next area that we looked at is receivables and service revenues, receivables of approximately 23 million, and service revenues of approximately 56 million. What we do in this area is focus on subsequent receipts, so we actually look to see whether the cash came in for the accounts receivable recorded. In our 2018 audit, we found a couple issues in the area of ambulance receivables and Medicaid contract net position, understated by roughly $3 million in the ambulance receivables, and 1.3 million understatement on ambulance revenue. However, in the current year, we found no repeat issues in these areas, as management adjusted their processes to capture these appropriately. In addition to testing the beginning and end-of-year receivable balances for service revenues, we perform procedures, we perform substantive analytical procedures, where we compare the balance to prior year and adjust for expected changes based on what's changed in the city. The next area, capital assets, is one of the largest items on the balance sheet. However, it is tested substantially in prior-year audits, and our procedures are focused on testing current-year additions, which were approximately $28 million in the current year, and that relates primarily to various improvement projects and the replacement of a large number of fleet vehicles that were very old. And then we also test depreciation expense analytically, and for additions, we focus on whether the useful life is appropriate, and whether they are appropriately capitalized and recorded. And we had no unacceptable findings in this area. The next area is deferred outflows and inflows of resources, and this largely relates to pension liability, so I'll touch on that in another slide. Accounts payable and accrued expenses is one of the smaller items on the balance sheet, however, it relates to a very large amount of the expenditures, and our primary focus here is whether the balance is understated, whether the city's actually captured all of the liabilities. So we perform what's called a search for unrecorded liabilities, where we go out and actually test a sample of subsequent dispersments made after the end of the period, and look for anything that maybe should have been recorded on the balance sheet. We also send legal representations and discuss with general counsel regarding significant cases, and anything that potentially should be recorded and disclosed in the financial statements. And we discussed a large case that Sherry talked about earlier, and agreed with the balance that was recorded.
Can I ask you a question about that? So relative to that, and maybe Dan can chime in, when, I mean, how do you record those liabilities when it's such an unknown? I mean, how do we, how do we account for that? Like in the violation that you noted, you know, we're talking about a month's difference, and we just settled that now, which is six months after almost the close of the fiscal year. So, I mean, how do you anticipate that, and how do we record those things?
Do you want us to give kind of what the accounting rules are first, and then, so basically...
I'm sure that'll be fascinating. Let's do that.
You know what, that's the way I look at it too, but there's two areas. There needs to be the probability that a loss has been incurred, and there needs to be, it needs to be reasonably estimable. So if it can be estimated within a reasonable range, let's say 100,000 to 200,000, the accounting rules would require you to record the 100. And those estimates can change fairly frequently, and normally what you would do is you would get your insurance carrier together, and you would get your legal counsel together, and they would discuss the status of the case. They would look at comparable cases and see how those cases may have been settled, and maybe what kind of settlement range the city might entertain, and they put all that together and come up with an estimate, and it could actually change in a very short period of time. And is that a good enough background?
You know, and I think that's a very fair assessment, it sounds to me like the accounting rules are very similar to what legal representatives would do also in analyzing a case. That's what the attorneys would do for a client, is you, when there is liability exposure, but there's no settlement, there's no litigation that's initiated yet, you have to assess the facts, apply it to the law, obviously, and see what the exposure, what the maximum and the minimum amounts may be. You know, you have to do your due diligence and contact the appropriate parties, including, for example, the city's insurer, and try to make a best-case determination of what that ultimate payout may be, if any. Liability is difficult to ascertain upfront, even throughout litigation, that's why there's extensive discovery as part of the process, there's extensive negotiations with opposing counsel as well, and there's a lot of fact gathering. But even then, if there's no settlement in sight and the matter proceeds to trial, it's difficult to say, for example, you know, what sort of a verdict may come back. But it sounds to me as though the attorneys involved in, you know, any sort of a liability exposure would be doing essentially the same thing that, you know, the accountants would be doing, is you try to gather the facts and come up with a best-case assessment, so that your clients are understanding of what may possibly happen.
So from a legal standpoint, sort of booking that liability doesn't weaken our case? I mean, that would be, I mean, so if you booked that liability, right, and then, does that become discoverable?
I'm not entirely sure if I understand what you mean by booking the case.
So I'm saying, I mean, you know, they're producing a financial document that's saying, we've got a liability case of 1.5 million. that's saying, we've got a liability case of 1.5 million dollars. And now you've got the, the person that's suing us, who has access to that document and says, well, look, the city's accounting for 1.5 million, I'm not going to settle for 900,000. I mean, I'm probably getting further in the weeds than I should, but I, I just...
I think that's a fair question, and I think there's a fine line to be drawn there. I mean, you have to hit a balance. I think, so let's use a simple scenario here. For example, you know, the city receives a complaint, and the demand there is for $5 million. I think that's something that could be booked as the potential exposure. I don't think that that would be, you know, any sort of admission or concession on the part of the city in saying that we're actually exposed to that liability, or in fact, you know, we're conceding to liability. It's just that that is, you know, a plain observable fact. It was a complaint that was filed, the demand is for $5 million. That's an item that can be booked under the records, but that does not increase any sort of liability that would attach to the city.
Okay. Thank you.
And I want to stress that we did record the liability correctly. The violation was on the budget, because we have to do that last round of augmentations before June 30th. So we're making a guess before the end of the year, what's going to happen. And things change in a month or two, so, so that's where the violation lies. It's, we did book it correctly on the, on the financial statements, and it's a large list of, of claims, you know, for all of the city's liabilities. So it's not just that one single, so it'd be very hard for an attorney to pick out what we did, in fact, book as their liability. So, yeah.
One, one more thing, and it may not even relate to the facts being different or known or a prediction of an unfavorable outcome. It may relate to the, the city has decided, rather than spend a lot of money to pursue the case for a long, long time, they may have made a decision to settle a case, and once they've made that decision, then there could be a liability reserve established. So it doesn't really have to even do with the facts of the case, it could be the way the city is going to pursue, is going to pursue resolving it.
Thank you. Accrued expenses, while being a smaller balance, is often one of the more judgmental areas of an audit. That's a very good question. In regards to expenditures, we perform a statistical sample of general dispersments, where we look to see whether the amounts were actually approved and appropriately documented, and that they adhere to the city's policies and authorizations. And then separately, we analytically test payroll and perform tests of controls over payroll, where we're looking to test, to see whether they, is appropriate documentation around adding and removing employees, pay rates, and approval of pay rate adjustments, and the maintenance of employee payroll files. And we had no unacceptable findings in that area. The next significant area on the balance sheet is bonds payable, and along with that, we test interest payable and interest expenses. So it, there's roughly $219 million of bonds payable at the end of the year, interest payable of nearly $2 million, and interest expense of approximately $7 million. So our procedures there focus on agreeing the ending balances of all debt instruments to amortization schedules that are maintained with the debt documents. And then we recalculate interest expense and the expected payable at the end of the year. And then we test debt payments, all debt payments made against the bank statements. And then for refundings or any other transactions during the year, we agree all of that to relevant underlying supporting documentation, and then cash receipts, and recalculate any gains or losses on debt transactions. And again, we had no unacceptable findings in this area. Another significant item on the balance sheet is the net pension and other post-employment benefit obligations, roughly $93 million and $73 million respectively. These items largely come from PERS reports that are hired or audited separately, and PERS hires actuaries and specialists that calculates the city's proportionate share of the net underfunded pension obligation and the related deferred inflows and outflows of resources. So our procedures there focus on understanding the expert's qualifications and reputation, and then we test the market assumptions that they utilize and agree the inputs in their reports to the city's data, such as payroll records and amounts paid. And again, we had no unacceptable findings in this area.
Can I ask a question there? You're saying you're actually investigating their expert? Are you indicating that you could say that the statements given to the city are inappropriate and should not be booked? I just, it just strikes me that you could throw it out, is that what you're saying?
Good question, probably wouldn't throw it out. But we do want to make sure that the people that are preparing this very huge estimate have the proper qualifications to do that work. And so the investigation relates to, you know, is this a well-respected firm? Do they have a history of performing these, these kinds of procedures and that kind of thing? Chris also mentioned that we look at the, the market assumptions used. And here, here, for example, the, the state of Nevada historically has used a, a market return that's higher than the average for similar organizations across the United States. Not much, you know, half a percent or whatever, so from 8% to 7.5%. So we focus on the fact that they're at the top of the market in terms of what kind of return assumptions they're expecting. And, and with the state of Nevada, historically, their actual returns have also been higher than elsewhere, and so we're able to get comfortable with that. But if there was a discrepancy where, you know, actual returns have been lower and return assumptions are higher, it would be something that we would raise with the expert that's preparing the report. Does that make any sense?
I guess I'm just questioning...
So we just don't accept their report as being automatically good? We first look at their credentials, and then we look at some of the major assumptions that influence the numbers.
But you would never recommend that we book something different than what we were given?
No, not as, not so long as they're qualified, and not so long as their assumptions of, you know, are in the ballpark.
The next significant item on the income statement relates primarily to property, intergovernmental, and other tax revenues of $30 million, $32 million, and $20 million respectively. For property taxes, a substantial portion of the valuation base that the assessment is based on was tested in prior years, so we utilize that base knowledge, and then changes to the valuation based in the current year, and applicable tax rates that have been approved by the state of Nevada, or the caps on the tax rates have been approved by the state of Nevada, to estimate what the property taxes should be, and based on those procedures, that supported the balance that had been recorded by the city. For consolidated tax revenues, we focus on, or retain the reports from the city, from the state of Nevada reports, and compare that to what the city recorded. For other types of fines, fees, and licenses, we perform control tests over the recording of those amounts, and perform substantive analytical procedures where we compare the recorded balance to the expected balances that are based off of prior years and other data that we have, such as rate changes and volume and usage of those items. And we had no unacceptable findings in that area. So the last area that we'll talk, touch on is the federal single grant audit testing. We tested two grants for compliance in the current year. Because there were findings in prior years, the city's not considered to be a low-risk auditee, so that still resulted us only testing two grants in the current year, whereas we had to test three in the prior year, because we were able to get our minimum 40% coverage with just two grants this year. And we had no question costs in the current year, and no material weakness or significant defined, or deficiencies affecting grant compliance, which means that once the prior year SDEs and material weaknesses have rolled off at least two years prior, we can then potentially lower the risk to a low-risk auditee. However, we did have one finding that goes back to 2018, and this is where the CFO was understated by approximately $215,000 due to expenditures that were initially considered non-reimbursable, but upon second review, were determined to be reimbursable, included on the 2019 reimbursement request. However, it's important to note that this did not, or would not have affected our prior year audoscope, so we didn't have to go back and do any additional testing on prior year other than reporting this as a finding on the current year CAFR.
And this is a good, I guess, a good problem, because we were able to recover $215,000 additional federal dollars.
Absolutely.
So, it's not good, but it's the right direction.
Yes. And that is actually the end of our presentation, so I just, again, wanted to say thank you. It was great working with Sherry and her team, and overall, a very smooth audit this year. So if you have any questions, we'll take those down.
Anyone have any questions?
So I'll just make one comment that I really would like Sherry to take back to her staff and, and thank them for their great work, that we recognize it, and just think it's important they know that.
Definitely, definitely. Thank you.
I also have a comment. What a difference a decade makes. It was a good year, and my congratulations to all of you.
Comment on this item? Okay, it's a non-action item, so we'll go to, let's do 12B, and then we'll take a break, since this one's just the formal action. Thank you. Ms. Russell?
This is just the formal action to approve what, everything we just went over, and approve the CAFR for 2019. Once that's approved, it will be able to be released.
Okay. Is there any questions? Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I move to accept the report and to direct staff, or authorize staff, to make various typographical changes that have been submitted throughout the report.
I have a motion in a second to approve the report and correct the typographical errors submitted. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Recession till 10?
Between on South Carson Street between Stewart and Road Street. And, you know, I was just starting at the time, but if you can remember back then, South Carson Street was, we were looking at as a multi-phase project to happen over an extended period of time because there just wasn't the funding there to do the project in whole. Obviously, in 2018, we were fortunate enough to win a $7.6 billion Tiger grant, and that allowed us to do the project all the way from the south end to all the way to the north end. But I do want to point out on this next, I want to show you spatially kind of where that money's been used on those projects four and five, and then where that unfunded portion is currently. So, all those four dots at the top, the blue dots at the top of your screen, those are all associated with project number five on that list, which was about $2.9 million. And so, some of those projects have been kind of parted off from the, separated from the South Carson Complete Streets project, and either are completed already or in progress of being completed. So, I'll start with the top one, $145,000 that was spent on drainage improvements associated with the Curry Streetscape project, which obviously has been completed in 2018. And then, kind of the next dot down, one of them, 1.54 million, those are improvements between Stewart and Fifth Street, big drainage improvements, large diameter storm drain that's currently within the South Carson's Complete Streets project, and that's about 1.54 million. The dot a little bit to the right of that is a $515,000 project that we've already completed, that was that partner partnership project with the DMV where they were paving their parking lot, we wanted to get the storm drain in prior to that, so we separated that out because of timing to get that done. So, that's been completed last spring. And then, we're currently almost completing design on another storm drain project, all tied to that South Carson Street system that's going to go across the Nevada Department of Transportation Maintenance Yard there, so we're in coordination with them, we'll probably be bidding that project in the next month or so, and that'll be constructed in the spring. But due to timing of that, we had to separate that project out as well. The dot, the blue dot at the very bottom is related to that project four, which was on that approved list, that's $900,000, and those are storm drain system improvements south of Fairview Street between Clearview and Fairview. But the red line is where we would like to use the medical parkway proceeds is to fund that road, Stewart to Road storm drain improvements. And this is about a 48-inch diameter pipe that basically connects the road system and subsurface is going to take all that flow in, you know, decent-sized events, not in the very large events, but it's going to take it and convey it to the linear ditch. This is an area where we're currently, we're going to reconstruct the roadway, complete reconstruction, so obviously, that's why we want to be able to fund it now because we want to get it done before we reconstruct that roadway, and this is going to basically complete that whole storm drain system for that entire corridor. So, we think it's very important to fund, I wanted to give you the background so you kind of know how the money's been spent thus far and why this is essentially kind of been left out and why it's important to bring it in. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Giomi.
Dan, I mean, as we do these, are we incrementally addressing that persistent flooding problem that we have at the south end of the Carson Mall and then continually across into the homes along Spartan and along Little Lane and even down into those duplexes down there? Because in high stormwater events, as I'm sure you guys know, those areas have been inundated. We've performed several rescues over the year in those areas, and so are we incrementally doing this, is it addressing, is it addressing that?
Yes, it is. Of course, it's to an extent that, you know, the 100-year, if we get hit by a very large storm, it's, we're just don't have, nor you should have infrastructure really sized to handle that, so there'll still be some of that. But this project, very much so, in, you know, five, 10-year, even the 20-year event, is going to take a lot of that flow that causes a lot of problem on the surface and bring it into a subsurface storm drain and then convey it out to the linear ditch to run east of the city. And all of these projects, I mean, we were, right now, we just got completed with the kind of linear ditch maintenance of the channel there, and of course, the DMV and now the Storm Yard, all of these projects connect to each other and increasing conveyance capacity downstream, so yes.
Mr. Bonkowski? Oh. Okay, Mr. Barrett? I think they were the same time.
Yeah, this is relatively close to where the roundabout's going to go, as I understand it or not, the red dot.
Yes, yeah, it's just, it just comes across South Carson, just south of the roundabout.
And are we taking into account at this, I'm sure you are, the desire to go off to Curry that's in the future in our minds at this point, if we can get cooperation from the feds?
Yes, so everything with the project, we've set it up as best we can to accommodate that future connection if it were to go.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Couple of items here, are there any plans to clean out the linear ditch? There's areas where it's so overgrown and there's a lot of trash that's accumulated in there, I just want to make sure if we're going to start conveying more water to the ditch, that we don't have an issue with conveying the water through the ditch.
Yes, so we just are completing a project that basically cleared out that ditch from the linear park there at Stewart all the way to Solomon. And yes, that capacity, there will be ample conveyance capacity to handle what we're going to basically be putting into the storm drain and conveying there now after this project.
And then, just to clarify, the proposal in front of us, the sales proceeds from the medical parkway parcels would go to the general fund, and then you're proposing that they would be appropriated and transferred from the general fund to the Storm Drainage Utility Fund?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then, where are you proposing that the additional $45,000 in funding come for the project? For this project, the new project? So, the sales proceeds are going to be, well, slightly less than 905,000. The project is 950,000.
So, the goal is to, the final numbers, those are our estimates right now, that portion, those portions haven't bid by our contractor, so we're, we'll cross that bridge, I guess, when we get there in terms of what we have left and what we can do. We do have a little bit of money in this year's, the stormwater fund, we have roughly, like $180,000 of, that's not much, but for projects, and this year's stormwater for small projects, so we could move some of that over there to help if we need to, but like I say, those are, right now, those are our estimates, we don't have final numbers, so.
Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the transfer of the property sales proceeds from the general fund into the stormwater utility fund once the proceeds are received, and to use those proceeds to construct drainage improvements as proposed.
I have a motion in a second to transfer the property sale proceeds into the general fund and then the stormwater utility fund, is there any further discussion? See none? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 13C, which is a presentation on the progress of the city's asset management program. Mr. Lawton, are you going to take us through this one?
Yes, Mayor Potem, I will.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Matt Lawton, Asset Manager, Carson City Public Works. So, we just wanted to take a moment to update you on the progress of our asset management program, also the tools and solutions that we've deployed recently, the status of our current facility condition assessment that's underway, and then also the next steps looking toward our asset management needs assessment and software solutions evaluation. So, I wanted to start off just by highlighting that Dan and I, over the last few months, we've definitely reached out and have presented what we've been doing with asset management for the last three years now to some local groups and organizations. In the summer, we did a presentation for the American Society of Civil Engineers, we did a presentation at the APWA Conference in the fall, we're still very involved with the Northern Nevada Asset Management User Group that Carson City actually helped to form about two years ago, and we interface with professionals from other organizations, Trucking Meadows Water Authority, City of Sparks, Reno, Washoe County, and we receive overwhelming positive response to what we were doing with asset management here at Carson City, so it makes us feel good that we're heading in a good direction with our asset management program. On that note, some of the more exciting tools that we have deployed recently that may be of interest, a few of these we shared with you earlier in the year at the board retreat, but we are still utilizing our manhole inspection and CCTV sewer assessment tools so we can get a better idea of the condition of our sewer system. We've also deployed a water meter mapping application so that we can get a more precise location for every water meter in the city, this is going to be really important as we move forward with our new utility billing system. We also now have a complete mapping of our construction drawing index for the city, so what this allows is for staff to go in there and be able through a map interface to access the as-built drawings for both capital projects and for private development around the city. And then, we also publish out a lot of infrastructure and asset information through MapGeo, we have a secured login portion of that tool so that we can see our various asset systems, and this isn't just to get information in the hands of people who are in the office, this is also at the fingertips of our field crews who are out there using mobile devices to access the information, so really getting it to the people that need to have that information at their hands. We've also deployed a water valve exercise tracking application, this is going to be really useful moving forward to know when we last maintained our water valves around the city. We also have a hydrant inspection application that we deployed over the summer, we have a seasonal worker who goes out and paints most of the hydrants around town and does some maintenance to them, so we are now tracking that through a mobile application. We also have supported our transportation staff with really building a comprehensive sidewalk and curb ramp inventory for the city. We are in the middle of a right-of-way mapping effort so that we can really define the legal boundaries of all of our transportation right-of-way and have that information readily available to staff. We have completed our stormwater inventory, we've talked about this for a couple of years now, we did a very comprehensive review of all the stormwater infrastructure for the city, and we have now built that into GIS, and so we now have that inventory available. And we've also deployed a fiber optic and conduit mapping application, this is so that our facilities and parks and communications staff can have a tool in the field to go out and specifically identify where there are locations for electrical conduit, fiber conduit, communications lines, to better locate those assets. So, something I'm really excited about is we've actually started doing a criticality analysis, this is something we mentioned in January at the board retreat, as something that we wanted to accomplish this year, so we've kind of used our water system as a testbed for this. So, again, what criticality is, that's when we're taking the likelihood of failure and balancing that by the consequence of failure for an asset. So, we went through our water system and came up with a set of criteria based on things like pipe material, pipe age, soil corrosivity, and we've actually been able at the asset level to build a model or a formula that can identify the criticality of an individual pipe. So, why this is exciting is because we can now see at a system-wide level where those critical areas are within the water system, but drill down at the asset level and build it off of data that was collected at the asset level, so that's really kind of a glimpse into the culmination of this program of where we're trying to go with it.
And Matt, the intent of this is to use this as a planning tool for our five-year rolling CIP requests every year?
Exactly.
So, we can put our money where it's most needed, which is, you know, the likelihood times the consequence, if they both are critical, then that's where we're going to spend our money.
That dark red right there, that's what we really want to make sure that we take care of and hopefully reduce as we perform those projects. So, right now, we're going through a process of kind of field verifying, so we have the model, the formula that we built, and now we're checking that to reality to see if we need to tweak that and adjust any of the percentages that we put in there. So, we want to expand this to our other asset systems, and, you know, the biggest area that we're working on right now is through our facility condition assessment, so Dan's going to take a few moments and update us on the status of that project.
Yes, I know the board, you have all been very aware of this project for some time, we were extremely excited to get the money to do this, and we think it's very, very important. I'm pleased to announce that our consultant, Faithful &amp; Gold, is now, they're actually out this week finishing phase three of four phases of assessments. Really, it's gone very smoothly so far, they're, you know, they're accompanied by our facility staff as well as some of our utility staff to go through all these facilities and understand the deficiencies that we know, and then further assess them themselves as an independent viewer, so it's been really, really good so far. I did want to point out, so we're about 81% of our buildings and facilities have been assessed so far, so we're really on track there. I did, I think we mentioned this when we were in front of you for the contract earlier, we're trying to front weight our, like, general fund, like, the Health Services Building, City Hall, those types of buildings, so we can have that data hopefully in time for the budget, upcoming budget year, and to be able to make some database decisions, so I did want to point that out, so about 20% remaining, and then we're, they're going to come back for phase four assessments in January, and then we should be starting to compile the reports and the data and the analytics, which I'm really excited about, hopefully you are too, I wanted to just highlight some of these things. So, this is a report, an example report of what we will get, but, and it's very hard to see, I apologize for that, but essentially, the figure above there is, you know, they'll come up with deficiencies and needs in our system for each building, but then they'll break it down on the individual components, so they'll categorize by plumbing, or HVAC, or electrical, and categorize all these projects together, and then, this is the criticality at its best, is what they're prioritizing based off, you know, public safety or safety risk to staff, and those are kind of those priority one, critical facilities that really we need to fix or address immediately, and then you can see there, that's what the bottom figure there is, is, you know, there's a priority one, priority two, priority three, and that's kind of how they classify and determine what's the most critical type of work, so essentially, the criticality analysis. We'll also get a 10-year expenditure forecast for each building that kind of lays out, you know, if we want to provide a certain level of service and adequately maintain and repair our facilities, these are the types of expenditures that we can expect to do what needs to be done. And of course, I know we've talked about, you know, looking at different funding levels and what that will do, and to, I guess, the condition of our facilities, and that's something we can be able to look at with this data too, which is really nice, because we can see, maybe we can't fund everything that needs to be done, but at least we can take this data with whatever funding level we have and be able to prioritize better with data and condition assessments and really drive those CIP decisions in the future. The last thing I did want to point out that I think's really neat, and part of the reason we selected Faithful &amp; Gold is they use this facility condition needs inset index, and this is a way to, it's a standardized method, a way to kind of compare different buildings and facilities to one another, which can help in that CIP decision process, so they basically, it's a pretty simplistic formula, but you have like your deferred maintenance and repair projects, the cost of that divided by your current replacement value for the building. And so, you know, one thing we can use this for is if we're getting to the point where it's almost a one-to-one ratio, then we need to start looking at complete replacement or some other way, we don't want to keep investing in these minor repairs when we're basically just getting, it's the point where it needs to be replaced. So, those are going to be, I think, again, data is knowledge, and I think we can really use this to help drive those decisions. We are going to come back, once this report is done, and we'll sit down and summarize it for you and make sure you have all the data, we're planning on coming back in March, the timeframe for that, so I just wanted to kind of give you a highlight of what you can expect when we come back.
So, we've talked about, you know, some of the things that we've deployed, our current initiatives that are underway, so now let's talk about next steps, and that's the asset management needs assessment and software evaluation, so we've previously emphasized the real need that we have as an organization for a comprehensive asset management software platform, so I just kind of wanted to run through, you know, the key functions that we would be utilizing such a platform for. So, first off is work management, being able to track work that is performed on the assets by crews, what, you know, parts and equipment is used to perform that work, what are the actual functions that are required to do the work. Preventative maintenance scheduling, being able to tie to the asset level when work needs to be performed, schedule it out through a calendar, and be proactive in performing that, that maintenance. Inventory tracking, being able to tie the parts and equipment to the actual work being performed, and then also beyond that, tying that back to our enterprise resource planning tool and financial integration, so that's really something that we need to strive for in a platform. And then, last but not least, reporting and dashboarding, we're collecting all of this information, we need to also be able to access it and utilize it for decision-making and get it into the hands of the people that need it. So, why is all of this important? Why do we want to have a platform that can do this? Well, first off is data capture, you know, we don't want to keep putting things on pieces of paper or having it in people's heads, we need to have it in a system that is built and designed to accommodate that information. Accessibility, you know, if it's in a filing cabinet somewhere, it's not really helping anyone in this day and age, we want to be able to get that information out through a web app or even better yet, a mobile device so that it's available to the people that need that information. Workflow automation, this is so that staff knows what activities that they need to be performing and on what asset they should be performing those on, so that we have a better workflow that supports the proactive maintenance of that asset. Increased efficiency, this is so that staff can receive work orders in the field, they can track their work while it's being performed, and again, focus more on those proactive efforts rather than being reactive. And then, of course, transparency, by capturing this information and having it be available for reporting and dissemination, we are being more transparent in our activities, so that's really, you know, why it's important to have a platform that supports all of this. So, what is our current state? So, we do have a solution out there, it's called Ready Asset, this is a plant-based solution that was actually started in wastewater, it provides some basic work management features. About three years ago, we expanded it to include some of our other work functions with kind of mixed results, it's an inexpensive solution, we stood it up fairly quickly, it's supported by a small company, it does have a lot of limitations to it. We don't have any sort of integration with the current system to our ERP or financial system, there's a manual workflow that's required, that, you know, basically, we're exporting spreadsheets and comparing, you know, parts to POs manually, so that it doesn't provide that automation between the asset management or the work management side and the financial side. The mobile device support is very immature, we really cannot leverage it as a mobile solution for getting work orders into the field to be used by our crews, the built-in reporting is very limited, we pretty much have to export data out of that system and use other tools to do any sort of robust reporting or dashboarding, as really limited cost forecasting and analytical tools, and that's something that we really want to leverage in an asset management solution as we move toward things like criticality analysis, we want to be able to have a system that can support that level of forecasting and analysis. And, you know, the bottom line is, again, it's a small company, this company's team is really, they kind of lack depth in software development and support, we're not really able to get kind of the advanced level of support out of that platform that we are really working toward. So, how do we, how do we deal with this? So, we're moving toward the next step, which is to do a full needs assessment for asset management in our organization and evaluate what software platforms would be a good fit for us, so. So, we're going to do that by sitting down with our stakeholders that are using our current Ready Asset system, you know, document their workflows, really understand what their needs are, and also sit down with other functional areas such as parks, facilities, landfill that aren't using their work management system currently, and start to build the requirements that we really need to get out of an asset management platform. And then, we're going to take those requirements and we're going to compare them to our current state, the platform that we have now, is there a way that we can better leverage it? Can we work with the vendor to improve it? Or do we need to look at another solution like the Tyler Systems Enterprise Asset Management? Tyler is our vendor for our Munis Financial System, they do have an enterprise asset management module, so we need to get clarity as far as whether those, that module meets the requirements that we're looking for out of an asset management solution, and also what would be the cost for deploying that solution? Or is there another solution, another third-party solution that we should be looking at that can provide all of those needs that we have, you know, for financial integration, work management, mobility, and so forth, do we need to be looking at someone else's solution? So, that's what is going to entail the scope of our needs assessment and software solutions evaluation. I just want to reiterate that, you know, this is a big decision for the city, we're taking this very seriously, we're trying to be very deliberate in how we're proceeding with this, this is going to provide the foundation of how we move forward with our asset management program, the platform that we select is likely going to determine workflows and best practices for the city for asset management, and, you know, this is very likely going to be the platform that will be in place for the next decade or two, so we want to make sure that we make the right choice for the city based on our needs. This is, in my mind, equivalent to what we went through with our ERP selection, both in scope and complexity, we have about 120 active users right now on our current work management system, once we bring on other functional areas, we're going to easily surpass 150 users with the city, so we have a fairly large set of staff that's going to be in there interacting with this tool on a daily basis, so it's very important to keep that in mind. So, that concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does anyone have any questions? Don't see any lights, is there, I do see a light now, Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, earlier I said what a difference a decade makes when we had our CAFR report, a decade or two, can you be more specific?
Certainly, you know, and that seems to be the state for enterprise solutions, is that, you know, we spend a significant amount of time and money investing in them, and they become part of our workflows, so it's very realistic that this could be a 10, 15, maybe a 20-year solution for the city.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that this is great work, I'm really happy with the progress that we're making, although I got to say, based on your slide up there, that Lumen seems to be the antithesis of all of our stated goals, so it'll be interesting to see who, if there is a third party, a third, third party, that the needs assessment can come up with to evaluate that, I mean, obviously, there's got to be a lot of them out there that'll be way better than what we're currently working with and the limitations, and I for one am not interested in the status quo after all the time and energy that we put into doing things the right way here, so thank you.
Yeah, is there, I'm not enough familiar with the ERP, I mean, is there integration potential there with that software, or is there a need, I guess is a better question?
Are you referring to our current software or a software?
No, 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 a future software solution.
Yes, so there is, as I mentioned, Tyler, the vendor for our ERP system, they do have an asset management module, other solutions out there do advertise asset or financial integration with the asset management platform, so yes, that is a feature that exists.
Okay, and I guess my more important question is, is do you see a need for them to integrate to the financial package? I mean, I do, but I'd like to see if you, if you agree.
Absolutely. We really, you know, we look at what we do currently with integration with finance of comparing spreadsheets and, you know, going with counts of sewer mileage and things like that, we have the potential to tie all of that directly back to the assets that are being maintained at the work order level, so it's no longer just the generalization of, yes, we have these assets, there were this amount, we know specifically we have this segment of pipe, this is how much was spent on it over the last year to maintain it? And we can link it directly back to our assets in the financial system.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Yeah, round two, and I'd just like to stress that the whole purpose here between, behind the asset management system is to create efficiencies, a planning tool, better planning, and in the long run, all of those things save us money. So, we're putting money where it needs to be put, we have the data to make informed decisions on which assets we should be keeping and which we should be disposing of, and most importantly, it allows us to keep our assets up and running to provide the services that the public, that we promised the public that we're going to supply to them. So, I agree with you when you say that the importance of this is on a level with the other major software programs that we have spent time vetting and pro- with the other major software programs that we have spent time vetting and procuring. This is just as important as any of those. And over the long run, this is going to make the city run so much more efficiently.
Mr. Barrett?
Thank you. I just want to say thanks to Supervisor Bonkowski for being the, calling the foreman on this to get this done. I, I agree. I asked a question about how long the software would last for us because it will cost us, but it will save us money. I agree.
Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, then we're, thank you very much for your presentation and all of your hard work on this. Thank you. We're going to move on to item 13D. This is for discussion and possible action on the asset management needs assessment and software solution evaluation with Atkins. Who's going to, are you going to do it, Miss Akers? Okay.
Correct. This is just to approve the contract for Atkins for the $87,073.50. We also have Brian James Atkins, from Atkins here, if you have any questions in regards to his portion of it.
So why don't you give us a little bit, if you can, what you're going to perform for this money? What, why are you the right vendor and, and what are you going to give us for this?
Well, hopefully you can hear me okay. Brian James, for the record, Atkins, I'm up in the Reno office. We competed competitively on this for the RFP and obviously scored well to win it. So our focus is going to be to support Matt and Dan and the Public Works staff as a whole. We're going to look at first the business needs of the city and do those stakeholder meetings, those outreach and gather what are the critical, you know, functions that you do as a city and want to track and want to make more efficient and automate and integrate. With that, we'll develop a list of functional requirements that the softwares will need to have to, to operate optimally for you and then build that into a scoring matrix. So before we even look at any of the softwares, we'll have an unbiased scoring matrix that's customized to the city of what your absolute needs are. That way, when we do these score, these software evaluations for each platform, we'll be able to assign a number based on the functional requirements that have been identified and also assign some more qualitative input on that as well as far as is it already configured out of the box, needs a minimal configuration or, or some significant manual operation that, to make these functional requirements happen. So with that, we'll, you know, obviously be working with staff and getting comments back and forth at every stage and summarizing this into a summary report, which will include a recommendation into what we think is the best software solution for Carson City. I guess backtracking just a little bit, Matt mentioned we'll be looking at the Tyler system, the Lumen system and one other. We have a market list of many of the systems out there and we'll be suggesting probably three or four to the city staff and, and picking that other one that we think will best suit the city before we go into the official scoring.
May I clarify on that? Are you saying that you're going to look for the one other third-party vendor and only one instead of letting everyone apply? Did I misunderstand something there?
So we have a market list on, on basic like functionality of the different systems that are available and we'll, you know, show that list to the city, work with the city, Matt and Dan, and show that list to them. We'll pick the three or four we think best meet their needs based on the functional requirements that we've identified previously. But it'll really be up to them to say, yeah, we want to take a look at this one and evaluate that one as the third option. Does that answer your question?
Well, I guess what that's telling me is that you've already preset it to look at Lumen's, to look at Tyler and to look at one more. So the question that I really had, why would we be looking at Lumen's? Why not looking at two other third-party so that we get the best opportunities for success?
Sure, yeah. So to clarify, we wanted to give Lumen the opportunity to highlight their development path and to make sure that we're leveraging the product as, as completely as we could be. As I said, they're a small company, they have big aspirations, they have a lot of functionality built into their future roadmap. So we don't want to discount that we currently have, have them deployed within our operations. So depending on the results of the needs assessment, that could be an option is maybe we need to leverage that platform more, work with the vendor to try and make it the more robust system that we're trying to get to. But if that's not an option, we need to be looking at what is baked into our financial system and then also what other options are out there in the marketplace. And so that's where Atkins is providing that market analysis list to help guide us through our functionality requirements and try and find that right fit for us. So we want to keep, keep the options open. We don't want to discount that the current platform we're on, maybe we, we can do something with it or maybe we need to be looking at the Tyler system or something completely different that will meet our needs more effectively.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Brian, a question for you, and this may or may not be pertinent to you. Either Dan or Matt made a comment that there would be an analysis of the 10-year expense schedule on assets. But in my experience, the expense schedule varies depending on the type of asset. So would you make recommendations for the appropriate expense schedule? Because I want to make sure that we're not missing roofs, roofing systems or HVAC systems that could be missed in a 10-year expense schedule. So when you're going through this process, you'll make recommendations like that if you see something that maybe we should be changing our parameters?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, you guys can add in. I, I think from my perspective, one of the functional requirements will be how flexible is the system? Because absolutely you don't want to back yourself into a corner where you're going to be missing information and not being able to make informed decisions and to, to make that informed financial decisions and plan appropriately, but go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just clarify, you know, I think that what you might be alluding to is some of the information that we're going to be getting out of the facilities condition assessment. So certainly that will be feeding into whatever platform that we're supporting for asset management so that we can do that, you know, 10 to 30-year asset cost scheduling. So certainly that will be something that will come up during the requirements identification portion.
Right, and I understood that that was actually in the needs assessment software itself. That's why I wasn't sure if it was pertinent here, but I would like if you see issues and, you know, that maybe we could improve, that you would be bringing those issues forward to us.
Yes.
And then just to, to comment on, on Lori's issue, I would have some concerns too about being the, the guinea pig for enhancing a software program. So, you know, being that first guy out of the gate, my experience with software programs and, and being the, the debugger or the, the guinea pig hasn't been good. You know, we do all the work and everybody else gets all the benefit and we pay the price for that. So I just think that we need to take that into account in our decision-making as well. I'd rather go with something that's established and has already been vetted and we know works than to try to work with a software vendor that's going to write a new program on our dime at our expense. And, you know, you guys are well aware of the frustration that we've been having just trying to implement the programs that we're implementing now and all the problems that we've had with all of them across the board. And those are existing experienced vendors. I think that that could be manyfold worse if we're trying to write something from scratch.
And if I could just make a one comment to shed a little bit of light as to why we're still evaluating the Lumen system. They're a known quantity to us. We know how the work management function works in that system. We know how the inventory is tracked in there. So it was really trying to quantify what it would take to get it to the level that we wanted to and avoid a, a fresh implementation of a brand-new solution. So we just wanted to make sure we had that as an option.
Supervisor Giomi?
I'm not sure I really caught the answer to Lori's question then. So are we limiting ourselves to one additional vendor in addition to Lumen's and, and Tyler? And if we are, why? Are we limiting ourselves to one additional vendor?
So Dan Suckey, City Engineer, for the record, and Matt and Brian can chime in. But I mean, obviously there's, we got to balance budget, the budget that we have to do this work. And so, I mean, we could analyze 20, but it's going to cost, it's going to be a bigger contract with Atkins, so we're trying to be smart about that. Atkins, like Brian said, has that market list. They, they know these softwares really well and it, an expansive list, you know, 10 to 20 softwares that they've already vetted based off past experience. So they're already going to know kind of, be able to tailor that down to a couple that will work for the city and be able to brief us on those capabilities. So the way we scoped it out is we thought, based off, you know, that kind of final list that they give us and talking with them, I think we can choose one that we would like to go forward with at least reviewing and diving a little deeper and doing the interview process with them and evaluation to, to make that selection. So it's not just, I mean, there's one list that we're going to go through the extensive process with, but I mean, we're going to rely on Atkins' experience and their bigger lists and narrow it down to even a smaller list before we move forward with that one. So there's going to be some, some broader evaluation of software, I guess, before we get to that one.
So, so if I understand what you're saying, you'll take the matrix that you're developing or have already developed, well, will develop based on the input. You'll take that matrix, you'll utilize that matrix to apply the knowledge you have of these other software companies other than Tyler and Lumen's. And out of that, you'll select one that you believe in your experience is the best fit to the needs that you've established. Is that a fair assessment of what you plan to do?
That's correct. And then at that point, they will be scored based on their, their evaluation, their performance in that evaluation and the scoring matrix that we developed.
You mean the three will be scored?
Yes.
The, the two existing plus the, the third?
Correct.
So what, if, if, if we were, and, and so I guess your, your thought, obviously you're recommending this, otherwise you wouldn't have come forward with it. You feel that your expertise is sufficient that you're not limiting Carson City's view of the asset management world by doing this process? Is that, is, is that what you're saying to us?
I think it goes back to Dan's question too. It, it has to do with budget and, and best practices and what's available. So if we do go through this and find that maybe the three softwares have, they're all obviously going to have limitations in different areas, but are those limitations going to be critical to the decision-making? I think that comes at the end after the functional requirements are determined for the city based on the business needs, but.
And so how much more incrementally would we be talking about if we wanted to open this up? I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking you to bid, sitting in front of me, I'm not asking that.
Right.
But I'm saying, just by order of magnitude, if we wanted to say, look at three or four or five others, what would we be talking about in terms of order, order of magnitude in terms of, of cost to expand that?
Right. So right now in the budget, we have, let me give you a more exact number.
Correct.
So basically the software evaluation platforms are the task 500 for 22,000. So we've allocated roughly 7,000 per evaluation at this point. So we could pretty much scale it up based on that, 7,000 per additional platform. There'd be a little bit of extra work maybe in the summary report, but.
So if we did.
Order of magnitude, that's.
Three or four, let's say three more in addition to the two, we'd be looking at roughly 20 to $30,000 more?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
I mean, I'm not, again, I'm not.
Yeah.
Asking you to bid, I'm just, okay. And then my next question is in terms of the, the matrix, a lot of times, and I'm, I'm discounting the two that we have because, because one, we don't have to worry about integration because it's existing. The other one we do. But, but of the ones that are non-existing systems within the city, how many platforms would you say we're looking to, how many other software enterprise solutions are we looking at integrating? Just, just to finance or are there others?
Yeah, so the other two big systems would be GIS. So we'd have to make sure that we have a solution that can integrate with GIS. And then also our SCADA system, which currently is in the wastewater plant, so our control system that, you know, feeds usage information at the asset level. That would be the other big integration.
And so in, in your matrix, do you feel like you're accounting enough for not only the integration capability, but the integration costs? And, and not only the cost on, because I, I know in my experience in a lot of integrations between systems, there's, there's not only cost with the software company you're buying, but then there are costs with the software company that you're existing. So, so our existing SCADA system, our existing GIS system, that software company is going to have a cost if you pick product Q, for instance. Does your matrix sufficiently take into consideration that, that variable?
It is, it is planned to, yeah. So the scoring matrix that we will develop for those, these evaluations will incorporate cost of the software, cost of integration, or if that software isn't integration, integrated, you know, the effect on staff as far as manually integrating that data back and forth. And two, things that are a little more tangible like responsiveness, stability of the company, you know, customer service, things of that nature. So we're going to try and give a, you know, holistic picture of any solution that's evaluated. So it's not just going to be a numbers-based decision. It can have some additional more qualitative elements to it as well.
And, and my final question, this is for Dan or Nancy or Finance. If, if, if we decide we want to expand this, it appears there are available funds based on the financial impact. I just want to confirm that, that those funds are available and they're not elsewhere committed.
The additional funds that they have in, if we add?
If we add more vendors, I mean, we would probably have to send them back and redo the contract. I don't know that we could do it today, but.
I think we would either have general fund contingency or the Capital Projects Fund has some undesignated funds in there.
Okay, thank you.
My general question then relates back to the RFP itself. Did we in our RFP give them the option of how many vendors or did we require it to be select one third-party? How, how was the proposal actually solicited?
So we initially were actually entertaining three additional vendor evaluations, but through the scope and fee process, that just wasn't feasible to do that. You know, as Dan said, the more we add on there, it, you know, we're talking about, you know, for, I think four, four to five-hour evaluations and then of course the analysis of that after the fact. So we whittled it down to the one additional beyond Lumen and Tyler.
My question then becomes, did this particular company give you a bid based on two or three others? Because that's what was in the RFP. That's what I'm trying to get to because I want to make sure we still keep everything on a appropriate playing field here.
Yeah, so to answer your question, the RFP was purely qualifications-based, so there was no dollar amount associated with that and that's by state statute. So we, we're required to make professional services a qualification-based RFP.
Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm the generalist up here, at least I think I am, and I think everybody's figured that out after three years. I have to say I'm getting mixed signals here. I don't understand, I didn't understand the answer on why we're including Lumen's if they, it's Brad's, Supervisor Bonkowski's flag reached me. I, I can't figure out why they're more easily integratable if we already have them and don't feel they match up. And then are you, are you talking from our city aspect that it's more integrate, integratable if we've already worked with them? I don't understand that.
Yes, so Dan Suckey, City Engineer. I think, in regards to Lumen, so I think Matt mentioned, we've, we've worked with them for five, five years, plus years on integrating various things. There's some strengths to them. I mean, maybe we didn't highlight that enough. There are some strengths to them. There's also some limitations, but we've also worked with them. We know what to expect. We've. We've invested our staff time and spent money to configure things a certain way that we like. So, I mean, it's providing some value. It's just if, and I know the board takes asset management very seriously. When you look at the software being kind of the foundation of that, it's something that we definitely want to get right going into the future. But I just don't think we're ready to completely write off Lumen at this point. I mean, because there is some value there. But I, you know, so I think that's why we included them as part of this evaluation. Is that getting to your question? Just to clarify.
Yes, it is. That then leads to Supervisor Giomi. Stacy's, why can't we widen it if it's not going to cost that much more? I'm sure you say we can now.
We can absolutely widen it. If you guys want to give us money, that's absolutely fine. We're just trying to be sensitive and trying to be most cost-effective. But, yeah, I mean, you can always expand that more, it just costs money.
Well, we all worry up here about how much we spend on things, but it seems to me that if you can't get the horse out of the gate properly, the horse is going to lose. So I'd say, let's go back to the drawing table and spend a little more so that we get a better bang for our buck later.
If I may interject, if that is the direction of the board, is it possible to move forward and get this started and then possibly bring it back for an amendment later on to include further software evaluation if that's what you're directing us to do?
To answer a question with a question, what's the hurry? Thank you, Brad.
Because I got my horse whip out behind these guys every day. They'll tell you, I'm always like, come on, come on, come on.
So maybe, maybe we can just talk about an option here. If we go to Exhibit A of the contract, we do here have the opportunity to amend this contract on the fly to maybe only approve certain tasks. And then we could leave the Task 500, which is the one we would need to bring back as an amendment, because that stage happens later. Is that correct? So you could be working the next five, six weeks, whatever, to get the front end, which is where the bulk of the work starts. So my question really is to you and to this, to my esteemed colleagues. Potentially, what we want to do is approve everything except for 5 and 600, which is the summary end result. So we could approve 1 through 400, and then you could come back and amend this contract to add in the adjusted amount for item Task 500. It's just a thought. And then at that also, I would love it if then staff could work on the allocation of the contract to what funding sources at the same time. We could take care of that. Is that, just kind of throwing that out there to give us an opportunity to decide if we want to bring one or two more vendors into the review? Just a thought to put on the table. Supervisor Bonkowski?
So Brian, as an industry professional, and we haven't asked this question, that how many vendors would you recommend is appropriate to evaluate in a situation like this? I mean, we've been asking everybody else but you. And then take your, because you have a financial interest in this answer, set that aside. And just, you know, give us, give us an answer on if.
Two or three.
Is it normal to evaluate two, three, five?
Yeah, I think definitely that three to five range is a good, you know, cost-benefit type balance there. If you don't, in my mind, the real emphasis on us is going to be identifying those needs and functional requirements upfront. And if those are done correctly and thoroughly, there's no reason we shouldn't be able to select, you know, interview three or five vendors and get a good solution.
Okay, and then Dan and Matt, going back to Stacy's questions about what else we're going to need to integrate with, are there any issues with our field mobile devices? Are there any issues with integration there? And are we looking at potentially having to replace those devices to make the system work?
So we're currently invested on the iOS platform. So fortunately, that's a very widely adopted platform. So I would be hesitant to adopt an asset management solution that didn't support that. So that would certainly be one of our requirements is to be able to accommodate our current iOS deployment.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back up to the board for discussion and our motion.
I'll give it a shot. I move to approve Contract Number 19300060 for asset management specific to the tasks identified as 100, 200, 300, and 400, and to direct staff to come back with an amendment to the contract for Task 500 and 600 to expand the software evaluation to include three third-party vendors and to clarify where the additional funding will come from.
Second for discussion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the contract for Tasks 1, 2, 3, and 400 to bring back an amendment for a third-party, three third-party vendor evaluations and to clarify the funding sources. On discussion?
Yes.
So to under, oh, go ahead, Brad.
I would ask for two amendments to the motion. Number one, I think we need to specify that the dollar amount of the contract is not changing because we need to appropriate more funds. Otherwise, we don't need to eliminate Tasks 500 and 600 if the intent is just to come back an amendment at the next meeting. And then also think that the language should be up to three additional vendors or three additional, or up to three third-party vendors that would be analyzed instead of saying three. Because I think that we need to look at our parameters and we need to look at the available software programs and make that determination. And all we need to do is appropriate the right amount of money for having three third-party vendors and let them choose whether that's going to be one, two, or three based on the best available data.
So we're on discussion.
This leads to my question, which is, I need to understand the motion exactly. How many vendors would we be talking about from what you said?
I said three.
But he's.
Only.
No, three.
Three more.
Three.
Third-party.
Third-party vendors. So Lumens.
Lumens, Tyler.
Tyler and three additional.
And three, so five.
Five.
Thank you, thank you.
So.
That gets us to where the expert.
I just wanted to understand where, yeah.
So.
I would agree to the first part of Brad's amendment, but not the second part.
Well, let's talk about this. So the contract should be for items 100, 200, 300, and 400, and it would be that contract amount as listed. Then the amending contract would add in the dollars for Tasks 500 and 600. Whether or not do we want three fixed third-party vendors or up to is a discussion. I guess that's what we're left with, right? Is do we want to just say up to three based on his analysis for Tasks 1 through 400?
I'd be willing to say up to three, but because of that, the contract is going to have to say up to three and include costs for up to three. The amendment is going to have to. So from that respect, yes. So if we get to that, I don't want it to come back to us, right? Once, if it comes back for an amendment, then that's it. Then if he says there's three additional that, or they recommend three additional, we don't have to do anything different. But if they recommend one additional, we shouldn't have to do anything different either.
Correct.
So that's what I'm.
Either way, we would just have one amendment and it would handle it either way.
So do we need to restate that?
So let's, for the record, just to be clear, so everyone's on what the motion is, is to approve this contract with items 100, 200, 300, and 400 for the amounts listed.
With their associated amounts, yes.
And then we would allow them to come back for an amendment that would allow up to three, two more, or three total.
Say three.
Third-party, as you've listed in the contract, as you call them, other third parties. So that would be up to three other third parties. Correct? And that the funding source would be used to allocate the contract between the funds appropriately.
You guys got it?
Everybody's clear on the motion?
Tamara, you got that?
I will.
I restated it. Any clarifications needed?
I agree that that is my motion.
Okay, and the second?
I agree that my continue, I will continue my second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, good job, everyone.
That was a little like making sausage.
Oops, I hit it the other way. 13E, which is for discussion only regarding the 2019 Public Safety Radio System Plan. Mr. Schultz and Mr. Jacklet, hello?
Good morning. Darren Schultz, for the record, Public Works Director, James Jacklet here. He's going to be going over the presentation. We kind of laid out in the agenda today, we have a number of things that are going with our radio communications. So we put them in order on purpose this way. This first one is just to tell you a little bit about the overall plan of what's going on with the radio system. So I'll turn it over to James, who knows all this stuff.
James Jacklet, Operations Manager, Public Works. So the Public Works Department has completed our 2019 Public Safety Radio System Plan. The plan contains the information previously presented to the Board of Supervisors. It details the limitations of the existing radio communications capability, and it outlines the actions necessary to mitigate the identified deficiencies and increase the reliability, capability, and effectiveness of the city's public safety radio system to support first responders and protect life and property. So I have a short slideshow here just to hit on points and give an overview. The plan serves as a strategic plan and focuses on looking at those capabilities and limitations of our existing system. It also captures the needs assessment. It captures our evaluation of alternatives. And the intent at the end is to have that strategic or clear path for the city's public safety communications capability into the future. The contents, there's a technical baseline, looking at the, those technical items and physical infrastructure pieces. There's an operational baseline, considering how it's set up to operate. A performance finding, which is how it actually works for our end users. And in with that, a thorough needs assessment. It also identifies or captures the fact that we identified alternatives. If you remember previous in the May 16th meeting, I discussed this in detail. We looked at those alternatives, the principle being rebuilding our own system to an equivalent level of service. And that was projected at over, in excess of $14 million over a 10-year period. And that was with a lot of uncertainty. So the main differences in that cost and why that would cost us more are that owning that, owning a core network versus partnering with the Nevada Shared Radio System. There's a significant cost with support contracts, licensing, and maintenance. Also, the additional communication site requirements we would have. We'd have to look at building additional communication sites, more equipment, more infrastructure. To properly maintain all of that, we'd have additional staff needs. Owning more systems, more equipment would result in needing to have more dedicated staff to do that. And the biggest unknown in that piece would be how we would solve interoperability with all of our mutual aid partners in that system. So, and regional users on the VHF side, Lyon and Douglas County and to the state. So rebuilding our own system would not, we'd still have a divide where we want to be participating on others. And that cost wouldn't just be, that additional cost wouldn't just be something we would be incurring. That would be something that those other agencies would have to incur. So for example, if we built our own system up, isolated in a vacuum, and then we wanted to connect them so to allow roaming of our radios onto the state system and the state onto ours, we'd both be looking at millions as well as all of the administrative configuration required and, you know, negotiations in order to deliver that roaming. So with that, partnering has been the, is where we ended up. So the contents, the plan also contains some detailed actions and cost estimates. So it outlines exactly what we intend to do. I can't say that it's going to be the last things that we'll ever do because that would be foolish, but it's the things that in the next 10-year period, looking out, all of the major items that we see that we have coming. And then has financial considerations, how that affects the general fund and the city budgets as well as those user departments. Those action items will be presented in the following board items for consideration. But the main ones are executing an interlocal agreement with NDOT that will allow a statewide radio system to be used by our personnel and their radios. Another item will be the radio console replacement. And we'll talk in more detail on these at that time for each of those items. The subscriber replacement, which is the portable and mobile radios, the existing system replacement, making sure that it's able to support our operation through this migration period today and into the future for our regional users, Lyon and Douglas County. We need to make sure that, one of the things that we absolutely do not do is lose any capability that we have today. Any step we take, as hard as it is, we have to make sure that we're only building upon capability and we're not impacting the ability for firefighters and officers to perform their duties as they are. And then lastly, the recording logger upgrade, which is the public safety recorder at dispatch. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jacklet. Is there any questions on this item for, Mr. Giomi?
Yeah, I have a few, I have to find them. In the report, you talk about in-building coverage and. Sorry, I'm reading my notes. In-building coverage and the use of, in-building repeaters, for lack of a better term, so not the red, bi-directional, whatever they are. But, and you make some notes here about, you know, that possibly costing some businesses in the community. So I guess, are we, I mean, obviously, 800, because it's a shorter wavelength, has a shorter travel distance. And so you're sort of inherently building in the need for these bi-directional amplifiers in the buildings because we're moving from VHF to 800. Do you have a sense of how many buildings in the community are going to need in-building assistance?
Sure, so those in-building coverage solutions, which are BDAs or distributed antenna systems, the solution is picked on the facility. And going back to the comment about the wavelength and coverage, the reason that's in the plan but costs are not identified for that item is because the build-out for the state's 800P25 system isn't complete. So we won't be able to accurately assess where those problems are or how severe they are inside of buildings until we have the towers up that are broadcasting into them. However, 800 actually, 800 megahertz, which is what the statewide system uses, actually operates better in buildings than VHF and vehicles. There's no, there are always exceptions. 800 is closer to cell phones, so that gives a comparison for anybody. Everybody has experience with what a cellphone will or won't do. However, the cost of those 800 systems is drastically less, I mean significantly less, half in most cases. And the amount of delivered capability is much more. So when a building distributed, or a bi-directional amplifier, I'm sorry, when a bi-directional amplifier is installed in a building for a VHF system, what we have today, we have to pick one or two channels. So we were fortunate at this point that we don't have a lot in town. And that means less impact to those commercial or private holders on their buildings. Nobody has significant investment in these systems today on our legacy system. So now is the time to get ahead of this. However, today, where we have put in those systems, we're only able to take care of one or two public safety channels, which means we have to change and dictate our operations and our procedures around that. And most importantly, we can't, we can't handle emergencies or structure incidents the way that we do today. So for example, our repeated channel for fire is, works inside the building. So for example, our repeated channel for fire is, works inside the building, but those systems do nothing to increase radio-to-radio communications on scene inside of a building. So all of that together, combined with one more factor, the last factor is, coverage on this system is projected to be much better for portable radios in-building than what we have today throughout our area. Now that's a contract design promise that that is going to be delivered. We have to wait and see. It's, I'm sure it's going to be better in many areas, but there will be issues, there will be problems. Those areas where there will be problems are 30 dB buildings, signal loss buildings like the hospital, large casinos, certainly new developments with a lot of concrete and rebar, lack of windows, large buildings, very, you know, very tall or multi-floor or very wide buildings. Those are the areas where that's going to be a pressing concern. Smaller businesses, homes, those areas are not going to be an issue at all. So to get to the end of all of that, I know that we're going to need to work with our community to get those in those high, in those heavy buildings, the hospital, casinos, Walmart, Costco-type, large retail environments. We'll have to go after that. The other areas, I don't think we're going to, we're going to need to. And back to what, back to the catalyst on what's going to cause them to do this, we have existing legislation that requires any development going in or any remodel would trigger a test of those radio communications inside that building. So the laws, the requirements on the books today, we're not enforcing as a city, we're not enforcing going back and without a development for anybody to make improvements. But I think that the mechanism, I believe that the mechanism is there for us to do that. So if there was a critical safety concern, the city identified with the fire department and they, and they felt that it was unsafe, I believe that the mechanism with code is there to go back and.
I would agree with you that the mechanism is there if there's a remodel or new construction. I disagree with you if you're implying that it's on the business to do it because we've changed our radio system. And I guess that's what I'm getting at. I don't, I don't think it's right for us to go back to five businesses in the community because we've chosen to go from VHF to a trundled 800 system to put in bidirectional amplifiers in their building. I think that responsibility rests with us. So that's my two cents worth. I would not support us charging the hospital to put a bidirectional amplifier within their building because we've chosen to make a change. However, if company XYZ comes into town, then yes, the current code requires that they meet radio communications to the standard that's stated in the code and I completely agree with that. So I just, I want to make sure we're not going down the path of, if we need them because we're converting, then we should build that into the budget. That's how I feel. I have a couple more comments. On page 29 of your report, you talk about future technologies and FirstNet is hanging out there. Is there any integration between this Nevada Shared Radio System and FirstNet in the future? Do you know if they're contemplating that?
Sure, so for FirstNet, that's the National Public Safety Broadband Network required by the federal government. AT&amp;T is the provider for that. They have a 25-year contract. That provides public safety level guaranteed service on a cellular data device, which means then you can write, you can carry, you can use that device for things and depend on that data better than you could in the past for a cellphone. That's the whole idea behind it. So it doesn't guarantee any of the applications that ride on top of that. I've been in meetings as recently as yesterday with the state Department of Emergency Management and those involved, the consensus is that these solutions that will, the replacement of land mobile radio systems, which is what we have and what we're talking about today, is still very far out there in the future. The day when first responders will toss their guaranteed, you know, their reliable LMR system to the side to pick up a cellphone and enter a burning building, we're not quite there yet. However, when that day comes, there's no better way for us to be positioned than on the current federal standard of technology. So the statewide system is a P25 Phase II system, which is the latest, that's the top federal standard. So any integrations done by FirstNet or by any of the major radio manufacturers are going to be built upon that P25 standard because that's where all of the big, all of the big communication systems are on that. So that's what they're going to add to. So yes, I believe it positions us better for that. And as an answer, does it utilize it today? It does, the system that they have does support mission-critical push-to-talk, which is a, that doesn't mean it's mission-critical push-to-talk, that's a, that's a term that they use, which is, it's push-to-talk over a computer or a device. It does support that today. It also supports, the radios that we're purchasing support a cellular modem inside of them. So even though the radios we have today talk on an LMR system, we could put a cellular SIM card in it, activate a plan with FirstNet and use that mission-critical push-to-talk or that data push-to-talk over cellular in it. So yes, it's there, but it's not ready for first responder service. It's there as a supplement or as admin and I think that in 10 years, we may be talking slightly different. I'm a little bit, I believe the technology will move fast, but I think that the community as a whole is not going to adopt that until they're sure that it's better than what they have today. And I believe that's a long way off.
And then finally, I know you brought this up before, but in your strategic plan, you talk about subscriber replacements and I know a lot of what I'm about to say is dependent upon the coverage that the system has once it's built out. But I just want to make sure we're looking at subscriber units and really, you know, if we can get away with just buying a handheld and not a handheld and a mobile for every vehicle, or three handhelds and a mobile for every fire truck. If that technology is such and the coverage is such that a handheld works and we don't have to have, you know, duplicate radios, I just, I want to make sure we're looking at the number of subscriber radios. And I wouldn't tell you to not buy what you need, but I would also ask that you be judicious about it and only buy what you need. In other words, if a mobile will suffice, pardon me, a handheld will suffice, then let's not put a handheld and a mobile in a vehicle when that isn't necessary. But I understand that's coverage-based and you really won't know until you're, until you're there.
Well, I really appreciate that comment because that's something that, those conversations are ongoing. So in the midst of this replacement, we've begun replacement, having those conversations with the, with the department heads responsible for their areas and asking them exactly that is, have you questioned the number of radios that you have? Do they, do they fit what you're doing? Not just when coverage increases, but today. We're in that, we're trying to be proactive in getting, in questioning, is that the best form factor radio? So not just moving or eliminating mobile radios or vehicle radios that may not get used except for in an emergency once or twice a year, but also moving towards cash-type management of radio resources. So instead of, because we do have to prepare for emergencies, that's part of the job. However, maybe that's not a radio in every vehicle, maybe that's a cash radio that can be issued to those personnel who were assigned those functions during that incident. And I do believe, and I, part of my performance aspirations for this system and what I believe that the statewide system will provide is, is that portable-based coverage in-building and on the street level throughout our county better than what we have today? Which means we should be able to reduce mobile radios in vehicles that, where it's not the best form factor. So a snowplow or a cop car or fire truck, they're going to have mobile radios because it's part of what they need to do. They need to be in that vehicle on the radio. But other personnel, for example, that maybe their primary use of a radio is when they're out of their vehicle. So we need to be, we need to look at that and certainly vehicles that are auxiliary, so equipment, backhoes, other things like that that are on a job site with other people, is a portable radio a better option rather than having a portable radio for the technician and one of the vehicles? So we're looking at that, the numbers that are presented in more detail and in the cost, in the cost portion of this and in those projections, those are meant to be conservative and capture of worst case based on how we, how we do business today. But at the, at the very end of the day, I'm, I'm not going to, I myself, I'm not going to override the sheriff or fire chief and say, you have too many radios, you can't, you can't have more.
No, I get it. And that comment isn't just for you, it's really for everybody that we just be, you know, because look, we're expending a lot of funds and I mean, I know, I know you know that and I don't want to compromise officer firefighter safety or anyone's safety, but I also don't want to duplicate efforts when we don't need to, when, when one tool will do instead of having two. And that's my only comment. Thank you.
So I just want to clarify too, that in this package, there's a discussion about adding a position and I don't want it to kind of get missed since it's not anywhere in the packets of approvals we're going to be making, that this plan also indicates for the successful implementation of all of this, that you'll be requesting a position in the upcoming budget, correct?
That is correct. And yes, it's not, it's not for approval. That's, that's really trying to show you and consider all costs we're looking at. It lays out in the plan why we want to do that. It's because I believe that a single technician is not sufficient. I believe that we're doing a disservice to ourselves today. I would like to, I'd like to rectify that and make sure that we're, we're taking care of this important system, not just funding it.
I just, I just wanted out on the record that that for you is what is necessary for the successful implementation of all this. And it, it'll have to get discussion during the budget whether you get it or not, but I did want to already disclose that that's your guys', again, another cost center that's not being discussed today, but a potential cost center for this. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask just a clarifying question. I don't think there's anybody up here who knows this situation better than Stacy and he may have covered the question that came up in your presentation when he asked all of the questions that he asked. But at one point you said, we'll have to go after that. And I thought you were talking about what that he subsequently asked about regarding the, I'll call them upgrades in certain buildings. Was that what you meant and was he clear on what he said about it?
Yeah, so if I, correct me if I, if I got off track on this. So I believe the statement about going after was talking about, in this implement, in the implementation plan that I, that's a section that's in this plan, we have phases. And in those phases, one of the items that needs to occur is we need the new statewide system, they're in the midst of a refresh and a rebuild, they're going to be building new sites and changing the way that current sites operate. So we can't, we can't accurately measure our coverage until that component is done, which is projected to be 2023, 2024. So there are certain items that, such as understanding how big our need for indoor coverage improvements is, we won't, we won't really know, we can only guess at this point.
So you might go after the information, not go after getting the buildings to put them in at their expense?
Correct, yeah, correct. And if I may add on there, just, I don't, I personally don't believe that we're going to make any in-building coverage worse than it is today. I believe we're going to be moving the opposite direction. And we always, I, I'm happy to say that we always promote and come together with these building officials. So I don't, I want to make, make it clear to the public, it's not, it's not my intent to ever say, hey, guess what, I did this, now you have to pay. It's not that at all. Usually we're at the table together going, you know, this is, this is an issue, what can we do to solve this? And if there are certain negotiations that occur on that and we end up paying some cost because it benefits us as, as Supervisor Giomi mentioned, then, then I think we would bring that forward for approval and explain that case and, and do the best thing that we can for, for our, you know, communications in our county.
Thank you for the clarification.
But we're not, by going to this system, we're not making communications worse at the hospital. That, that really just needs to be clear on the record.
Correct. So based on performance measurements that we have done on our existing system and on the state's existing system today, they're equivalent in the hospital. So we're not.
It's pretty hard to make it worse, I'll tell you that.
No, because it's already bad, you're saying?
I believe, I believe this is going to make it slightly better, but because of the nature of that facility, I'm not going to say that it's going to fix it. But the solutions to fix that problem will be significantly cheaper than they are today.
Supervisor Bonkowski?
Going back to the potential new position that is in the packet, in our discussions when we met, it's my understanding that we would be asking for a new position, not exclusively because of any increased workload, but because we currently have no redundancy. We have a mission-critical position and only one person that is fully trained for that position. And if something were to happen to him, then we would be in a very precarious situation. So the intent of the new position would be to have two cross-trained technicians to take care of this critical, mission-critical function. Is that correct?
No, thank you very much for that clarification because that is true. This is a, this is a need that I feel that we have today. The need will not be made worse by this system. Having, in my, my opinion, having one person on, on the job for this is insufficient. We need at least two so that one person can take a vacation or leave town without leaving us in a position where we're taking on that additional risk. So that's the, that's the intent of that staff resource and it's, it's not in the plan because it's necessary, it's in the plan because it's part of getting the communication program to where it needs, needs to be.
And there's sufficient duties. So if we have a technician now and he can handle the workload, but we bring on the second technician, there's adequate work for them so that they're not sitting around waiting for the first guy to go on vacation?
I'm asking for one because I feel it's reasonable. There's, there's adequate work for a team.
Okay. Mr. Giomi?
Thank you. I just, I'd like to comment that, you know, 35 years ago, the city had a, an entire radio technician team that coordinated radio communications across the city. And over the course of time, and for various reasons, they disbanded that and we sort of went to this catch-as-catch-can, every department fend for themselves. And that process continued because it was ancillary duties for people like me in the fire department or Kurt in Public Works or Ken and his counterpart in the sheriff's office over the years. And so everyone sort of went their own direction and, and yes, you'd come together and try and solve a problem, but ultimately it never got solved because no one sat over the top of everything. So kudos to Public Works and to staff for corralling this. I can't think of a more important thing from a public safety standpoint for our employees or our community. If you look at every disaster across the country, you will see that the number one failure to bad results is a lack of communication. And so I can't thank you enough for taking the time to put this together. I know that we all have battered you with questions and barraged you with questions, but it's a shocking number to some people. And so I hope you take that for, for what it's worth, that we're just trying to watch out for our best interests. But I thank you and our public safety team for taking the time to put together a comprehensive report and bring it to us so we can move down the path in a professional cohesive manner. So thank you.
So do we have, no one else? Okay, do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, then we're going to, this is a non-action item, so thank you. We're going to move on to Agenda Item, now we're going to spend all the money. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 14A, which is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Interlocal Agreement Between Carson City and DOT for the Statewide Public Radio System. Mr. Jacklet?
Yeah, so this, the item is, this agreement, if approved, will allow Carson City to utilize the statewide public safety radio communication system as recommended in the, in the radio system plan we just discussed. Under the agreement, the city will pay NDOT annually for each radio that is registered and activated on the radio system in exchange for unlimited airtime. The agreement is for an initial term of 10 years and will automatically renew for an additional 10 years at the end of each term. This agreement may be terminated by mutual consent of the parties or unilaterally by other party without cause with an effective 120 days after written notice is served. And the agreement is for an amount not to exceed $5,76,000 for the initial 10-year term.
term, which goes to June 30th, 2029, and not to exceed 634,500 per year in the subsequent automatic renewal terms of additional 10-year periods. So on May 16th, 2019, at the, the meeting, the Board of Supervisors meeting, an earlier version of this agreement was, was presented and, and discussed. The, the board directed staff to revise the terms of the agreement and bring it back for consideration. Some of those changes were to have at least a 90-plus day termination period, which we've addressed by providing a 120-day termination period. Also to have clarification on the billing process, which is, which is included, clarification on the, the costs exceeding the limits in the agreement, which are covered, and language specifying the city's right to participate in the NDOT user group and technical advisory committee, which are also included. So the, the agree, we addressed those, those items and we're, we're bringing it back today. This, I, I just want to preface discussion by saying that this is intended to be conservative as mentioned before. This is to allow up, this is a cap, not to exceed cap without coming back for, for approval for additional radios. And with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
You. Mr. Bonkowski?
So I had, I had two items in the interlocal agreement that I wanted to discuss. The first one is on page three, under Article Two, City Participate, yeah, Article Two, City Participation, Item Two, City Equipment Infrastructure and Property. In the last, next to last line says, including real property under this provision, let's see, "The department's lease or use of any city equipment, infrastructure, or property, including real property, under this provision must be approved by the Board of Supervisors if required by statute, regulation, or city policy. Otherwise, the lease or use of city equipment, infrastructure, or property may be approved at the discretion of the city's Public Works Director or his or her designee." So I brought this up in a, in a previous meeting because, I think because of the importance of this item and because of the dollar amount of these systems that we're implementing, that it's a good idea to keep the board fully informed and to make sure that they are the deciding entity on the use of city property. So I don't think we need to change anything here, but what I've asked for is that, that we have a discussion in the upcoming strategic planning session about creating a city policy that would require that the use or lease of any city equipment, infrastructure, or property would have to be, would have to come to the board for approval. So I don't think we need to make a change, but I did want to put that out there, that I think that, that that should be a city policy, and we can handle it that way instead of changing the contract. The second issue that I wanted to discuss is actually in the underlying mutual aid agreement between NV Energy, Washoe County, and NDOT. And it's on page five of their agreement, which was just page 509 of our packet. In Article Three, this underlying mutual aid agreement is a, is a two-year term that automatically renews, but we're entering into a 10-year interlocal agreement. And so I wanted to run that by the DA to see if there were any conflicts there, if we needed added language saying that if the underlying agreement was to terminate for whatever reason, would we then need to automatically terminate our 10-year agreement? So Todd, if you wanted to address that, just to bring the other board members up with your, your esteemed opinion on that.
Supervisor Bonkowski, this is Todd Reese, Deputy DA for the record. There are at least two mechanisms in the interlocal that we're entering into to address that concern. If the, if the agreement between Washoe County, if I'm correct, Washoe County, NDOT, and NV Energy is terminated, then A, there's 120-day out with our agreement, so we could simply notify them that we want out and have a, be out in 120 days. There's also the number of radios that are used on the system is a number that we control. Theoretically, we could say we're going to use zero radios and not have any costs associated with that.
Mr. Giomi?
Yeah, my comment is similar to Brad's on page 42 of the packet, page three of the agreement. It's, it's the exact same thing. I, I agree with having a policy relative to use of cities' property specifically or infrastructure. I, you know, equipment, I don't know that that needs to come to the board. But I, I would feel more comfortable if we changed Public Works Director to City Manager in the agreement, and I don't think NDOT would object to that. And it's, it's not because I distrust Darren, I just, you know, if you're using property that, that another department is utilizing, I, I think it should be the City Manager making that decision. So I, I agree with Brad, that can still go forward, but I would propose changing the language from the city's Public Works Director or his or her designee to the city's City Manager or his or her designee.
Wanted further discussion?
Yeah, my only comment on that would be that if we create the city policy, then it would take care of that. It wouldn't even be the City Manager or the, it would be the board in every case.
Since this is an otherwise statement. Right. Because it says otherwise. So I agree with Brad.
My only comment to that is that we have, we don't, we don't have a policy, and we don't know if we're going to have a policy. Because we have to vote on a policy as a board, and we're presupposing that we're going to support that policy, and I, and I don't, and, you know, I don't know that we can do that. So I, I would be more comfortable at least minimally changing this to City Manager.
I can live with it either way, but, Mr. Barrett?
I just make the point that I agree with Stacy in the sense that the city manager is our employee, and while Darren works for us, he's, works for the city manager.
Dan, did you have a comment?
So, you know, I wanted to throw this out on the record. I don't know if this may be helpful for the board's consideration in discussing this further. And I haven't discussed this with Todd or with Public Works, but, and I don't know if this was previously discussed by anyone, but my interpretation of that article we're discussing right now, where it says, if department's lease or use of any, it's the, it's the or clause that I'm really sort of emphasizing here. "If the lease or use of any city equipment, et cetera, must be approved by the Board of Supervisors if required by statute, regulation, or city policy. Otherwise, the lease or use of city equipment may be approved at the discretion of, as you're discussing right now, either the Public Works Director or the City Manager. As to lease, I believe that under the provisions of NRS Chapter 244, that is strictly within the purview of this board. So a lease would not be able to be approved by the Public Works Director, or for that matter, even the City Manager. That would have to be approved and come before this board for approval." So I just wanted to clarify that, if that was a point of confusion, because really I think what we're reduced to focusing on here is, with respect to this provision, is the use of equipment and not the lease of any facilities. That would have to come to this board.
Well, I would say to further clarify, when it says, "The use of any city equipment, infrastructure, or property," that's specific to the radio system, not a general statement about all city assets.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. It says use, it's use in providing the radio system and associated service under this agreement.
So is there an impact to that if we have an incident and we need to loan somebody a radio? I mean, that's a decision, the decision that has to be made on the fly, so I want to make sure that we're not, we're not creating a problem.
Well, I don't think we are. I mean, I think, you know, the City Manager can designate each department director to, and probably has, to, you know, to, to assign equipment that they have. I mean, you know, the fire chief sends a fire truck out of town, he doesn't call the City Manager first and ask for permission. So I think, I, I still think, I, I don't think it would cause a problem. I still think it should rest with the City Manager.
Who could then turn around and designate the Public Works Manager or the authority?
Well, yeah. Yeah, or any department director, yeah.
Right. The question is, do we always want our agreements to say City Manager is where the authority lies? And then the City Manager makes the decision on whether or not they want to grant that authority or not grant the authority? That's really the crux of the discussion. Why don't we think about it for a moment and let me take any public comment on this item? Mr. French? I'll do that.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, Denny French, Carson City, Nevada. My question on clarification is, should this contract be terminated before the 10 years? Is, is there any rebate? I know that's
We only pay year by year, so
So the $5,000,000?
Is over 10. And we pay year by year, so if we don't use a service in a year, we won't pay them anything. We'd go to zero radios.
Well, the radios and the lease and all that, I'm understanding, but I'm perhaps talking about the $5,76,000?
It's the same issue. The $5 million's over the 10 years, and we're paying $600,000 a year, 634. So if we don't put any radios on, then we would pay zero.
You're not charged for that.
Right. So we're not paying for service we're not getting.
All right, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I'm going, geez, we're stepping in big. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back up here. Did we, did I stall long enough for us to come up with whether we need a City Manager or leave it Public Works?
Well, I think that we should hear from the City Manager and the Public Works Director.
Okay, they're, they're looking at each other. That was good.
My question is, is, is there a problem with
No.
with changing the language?
It won't change anything. It won't change any way that we do things now, or before, or after. It, maybe.
What's your pleasure? Somebody?
I move to approve the agreement as presented us with the change to Article Two, Section Two, where the last sentence is, replace the words Public Works Director with City Manager.
I have a motion in a second to approve the agreement as proposed with the change in Number Two for City Equipment Infrastructure and Property to replace city's Public Works Director with City Manager. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question, and it's probably an ignorant question. This ends in June of 2019. Are we already on this system? Have we gotten our six months, or are we losing six months?
The, the termination there was just intended to terminate with the, with the fiscal year. We're actually not going, if we had a radio tomorrow, we're not going to be charged until that annual assessment comes up. So July, just like, similar to what we do with our REU or VU program, the state looks at the number of radios on the system, and they're going to divide operating expenses. It's a snapshot inventory, so there's no, there's, there's no real reassessment in between. So we're not, we're not going to, we shouldn't suffer any charges under this system until that next assessment, which should occur on or after July.
So they tell me there are no stupid questions, I'll hide behind that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. We're going to take a, just like a five-minute recess, we'll be back at noon. No problem. Hey, when the body, when the body talks.